My name is Meg Bomke. I represent the Falmouth District and serve as the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Please note that the Garrisonville District Supervisor, Mark Dudenheffer, is unable to attend today's meeting. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Bomke?
Here.
Mr. Cavalier?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Dudenheffer? Mrs. Mauer?
Here.
Ms. Shelton?
Here.
Mr. Snellings?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. I would like to offer our Board's sincere thoughts and prayers to the victims of Hurricane Michael and also to the first responders who were there and remain on-site, helping those in need as the result of this devastating storm. And thank you to the Sheriff's Office and Fire and Rescue staff that helped when the remnants of Hurricane Michael came through Stafford County last week. Next, did you know that October 7th through 13th was National Fire Prevention Week? This year's theme was "Look, Listen, Learn: Fire Can Happen Anywhere." The goal is to educate people about three basic but essential steps to take to reduce the likelihood of having a fire and how to escape safely in the event of one. Look for places in your home where a fire could start. Take a good look around your home. Identify potential fire hazards and take care of them. Listen for the sound of the smoke alarm. You could only have minutes to escape, especially once the smoke alarm sounds. Go to the outside meeting place, which could be a safe distance from the home and where everyone should know to meet. And learn two ways out of every room and make sure all doors and windows leading outside open easily and are free of clutter. Many thanks to our dedicated men and women, career and volunteer with the Stafford County Department of Fire and Rescue and Emergency Services for your tireless efforts on behalf of the citizens of Stafford County. If you need help installing a smoke alarm or a carbon monoxide detector, we really recommend that you contact our Stafford County Fire Marshal's Office, and I'm even going to make it easy and give you their number, (540) 658-8648. And they will kindly come and help you. May I have a motion and a second to approve the regular agenda?
Sound booth?
Certainly.
Okay, and we only have one deletion, which will be the presentation of the proclamation to Mr. Pondexter. Any discussion? Cast your vote? Tally the vote. Motion passes with one absent. Our first presentation today was going to be a proclamation to Mr. Percy Pondexter. Unfortunately, Mr. Pondexter was unable to join us today, and this presentation has now been scheduled for the Board meeting on Wednesday, November 7th. However, our next presentation is a proclamation recognizing October 24th as World Polio Day. With us today, we have some members of the North Stafford Rotary Club, including Ms. Sandy Duckworth, former Rotary Governor and Club Foundation Chair, Mr. Trevor O'Toole, who's the current President, Ms. Sharice Taylor, Youth Services Committee, Mr. Jack Pollan, who is the Sergeant-at-Arms, Ms. Carol Foley, who is the Grants Chair, Roberta Schreiber, who's the Communications Officer, Mr. Felton Page, District 7610 Polio Chairman, and Ms. Janet Brown, the former Rotarian Governor, and Mr. Earl Bachman, who is the District Assistant Governor. We also have with us Renee Lawes, Kathy Solem, Bob Solem, Stephanie Lyles, and Jim Holcomb, who joined us and found out about this this morning and came down from Alexandria, and he's the Special Assistant to the Governor. So with that, I would like for all of you to join me on the dais up here, if you will.
You can come on, all the way over. Come on over. Janet and Felton, come on over here.
I didn't bring the horse.
I gotta have the trouble over here. All right, so, thank you so much for coming, and I'm going to read this proclamation, and then if you all would have a few things to share with the Board and the community, we would love that.
Whereas Rotary International, founded on February 23rd, 1905, in Chicago, Illinois, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations. And whereas there are over 1.2 million Rotary Club members comprised of professional and business leaders in over 35,000 clubs in 200 countries and geographic areas, including the North Stafford Rotary. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary, in 1985, launched Polio Plus and spearheaded the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, the United States Center for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1998, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date Rotary has contributed more than 1.7 billion and countless volunteer hours to the protection of more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary's advocacy efforts played a role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $8 billion to the effort. And whereas Rotary will raise $50 million per year over the next two years, with every dollar matched with two additional dollars from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are insuring funds to provide much-needed operational support, medical personnel, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas since the launch of the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, in 1988, more than 17.4 million people, mainly in the developing world, who otherwise may have been paralyzed or walking because they have been immunized against polio. And that more than 750,000 paralytic cases of polio are now prevented every year. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors, on this, the 16th day of October, 2018, that it be and hereby does proclaim October 24th, 2018, as World Polio Day in Stafford County. And be it further proclaimed that Stafford County, Virginia, commits to the continued fight for a polio-free world. Wow. Thank you. So I just want to say, you all, all the Rotary Clubs and North Stafford Rotary, you do so much for our community, and we can't thank you enough. I really want to thank all of you for taking off today and coming here to join us for something so important. So my husband and I were talking this morning, and he said, "You know, when we were kids, we used to have the little sugar cube." So maybe somebody can share with us how they do that now, because I'm not aware. So I'll let you have the mic first, Sandy.
I would love to. Yes, you all probably noticed that we have on purple or shades of purple, and that some of us have purple ribbons. And that's because we have this purple for the little kids. It's called Pinky Purple Finger. And what happens is when we go into countries to immunize, and we immunize hundreds of thousands of kids at a time, children under five years old are immunized. And in order to know who we've immunized, we dip their little finger into a purple ink that stays on for a while, so that when we go door-to-door, we can tell whether those kids have been immunized. So that's why we wear purple, to remind everybody that it's very important. And the kids nowadays, instead of the little sugar cube, they get drops. And so it's much easier and faster, and we thank everybody who has worked with us and for us. And today, Madam Chairman, our Governor, past Governor, and her husband are from the Rappahannock Rotary Club and Stafford Rotary Club. We have how many from Stafford? We have Stafford Rotary Club and North Stafford Rotary Club. And then we have Jim, who came all the way from Northern Virginia, so we're just all over. But you're all welcome to come and visit Rotary anytime. And who else wants to say something exciting? Madam Governor, how about you? You're head of polio for the district.
Yes, but I know to defer to past district governors and let them speak first.
Thank you. We're this close to eradicating polio. I had the great opportunity to spend three weeks in India, and as Sandy indicated, we actually dipped fingers of children in a purple, kind of a purple mask, to make sure that we knew who was eradicated, I mean, who had had the vaccine. What a great experience to spend three weeks in India and work with all of the children and all of the mothers and fathers, and to go door-to-door to make sure that we've gotten everybody, and everybody wanted our little sugar cube. So thank you so much for being here, and just remember, we're that, this close. We have three countries, Afghanistan, Pakistan, and Nigeria. Those are the three countries that there's just one or two polio instances. So we are really that close. So thank you all for being here today.
Would anybody else like to say a few kind words?
Let me see, real quick, as the Polio Plus Chair, one of the things that I try to do to keep our donations kind of fun and light, this campaign is getting people to join Page's Polio Plus posse, because we riding down on polio. We just about got it last month, the report came out, and in the world, three cases, in the world. So we are doing one heck of a job. We are that close to a countdown to history. And so I want to thank everybody for their support, and we're going to keep up our effort.
What's that about, though?
Okay.
Tell me, why am I looking at a posse?
Okay, you're looking at a posse because that's what I need all of us to do, join the fight, join the collection effort. The giving of the money, okay, to help a district, thank you very much, giving of the money to help us continue our donation efforts, to help us continue the fight. And again, I didn't bring the horse this morning, but I thought about it, okay.
Anybody else?
Well, I just want to say, people of a certain age can know how much progress we've made in this. I can remember when I was a youngster, they would close down swimming pools, and they had horrific photos of, it looked like a gymnasium floor full of iron lungs and kids inside them. You know, so, and now we're down to three cases in the world.
Anyone else? Okay, last thing? Thank you, ma'am. So my husband's a Rotarian, we'll do the four-way test, okay? Are we ready? Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will friendships official to all concerned? And is it fine? Exactly. Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate you all and all of your efforts in eradicating polio. Thanks. Come back many times. Here. Wait, wait, wait. Don't get my tax. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate you.
Felton, I love your poster.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, good to see you.
Wow.
All right, bye.
On Sunday? Seriously? Thank you. Very much. Appreciate you. Thank you.
All right. Now we're going to have presentations by the public. Please remain courteous and respectful to members of the audience and to the Board. If you're here to speak about one of this evening's public hearings, we would appreciate you holding your comments until the 7:00 PM session. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. Speak slowly and clearly into the microphone and begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light on the podium to monitor your time. Green indicates the start of your remarks. Yellow indicates you have one minute to summarize your comments, and red obviously means your time is up. I do not have any speaker cards today, so if anyone in the Board chambers would like to address the Board, please come up. No takers today? Okay, with that, I'm going to close our public comments. Next, our report to the Board members. Just remember, if you wish to pull an item from the consent agenda, please do so.
Mr. Snellings?
I'll defer.
Mr. Cavalier?
Just a few quick items here. On Saturday morning, I had a Firehouse Town Hall in Whitewater. Lots of, about 50 residents came out and had good staff support. Mike Smith was there, and we had representatives from the Fire Department, Fire and Rescue, and the Sheriff's Department, and VDOT, and so it went very well, and their concerns are being addressed quickly. Also, I had the pleasure of going to the Whitewater Beach, the annual Chili Cook-Off, where I was the judge this year, so that's always a nice event. And then, on Sunday, attended the 114th anniversary of Little Forest Baptist Church, one of our oldest churches in the county. It's on Stoff Route 1, across from One Stop Auto. So they had a great turnout for that event and should be embarking on their expansion project here very soon. So one of the things that came out of that was, on the plaque that I put in there on our 350th anniversary, where we dedicated plaques to a lot of the churches in the county, it says on there that they first started meeting under a persimmon tree. So that's going to be part of their building project, because we do require some plannings, and so they're going to have a persimmon tree planted in recognition of that when they do their building expansion, that construction project. So, all very nice, thank you very much.
Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Ms. Giles. Very quickly, since our last meeting, I attended the Healthy Generations Meeting, which is one of the committees I serve on. Also, I attended and actually worked at the White Oak Museum Oyster Roast this past weekend. They wisely put me in the parking lot, away from the food, and the really nice baked goods. The only other thing I'd like to do is give a great amount of praise to our EMT personnel, Curtis Rowe and Phil Young, who came and took care of an emergency at our house. Once again, I'm just continually impressed with the quality of our personnel in our Fire and Rescue. And also, where I work, I get to see at the EMT class that the various volunteers and paid staff come to help teach the students and show the students, the students in the EMT class, the various activities that they do, and make it very much real life. And I think it's terrific that they bring that real-world component into the classroom, and it's very much appreciated by the students. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Mrs. Mauer?
A couple of items. I want to give some congratulations, first to Gwenna Skiff. They had a wonderful fundraising event last week. Also, to one of our newest Eagle Scouts, Michael Fazio, who I attended his Court of Honor with Troop 317 last Sunday. Also attended a meeting with a young scout troop to talk about building a better community. And it's really fascinating how you can take the 12 points of the scouting law and walk through those, and how the young scouts can utilize those 12 points of the scouting law to build a better community, both within their schools and within their neighborhoods. Really enjoyed that and appreciated the invitation. Also met with Dr. Kizner, and want to welcome him to Stafford County. I look forward to working with him. Attended a couple of meetings. I attended FAMPO with two of my colleagues, Meg and Cindy. Also attended PRTC, and I'm happy to report that gas tax revenues are on the rise. And finally, Rock Hill is rocking lately with a lot of new grand openings, and so I've had the pleasure of attending, in the last two weeks, two grand openings, and ribbon cuttings, one is for Barley Naked. And I want to welcome Barry and his lovely wife, Missy, to Stafford County, and thank them for investing in Stafford County. Rock Hill is grateful for the new brewery and the 10 years of brewing experience that Barry brings to us. And also, this morning, I attended the grand opening in the ribbon cutting for the grounds, which is a new coffee shop in, also in the Rock Hill District. And Deb and her husband, John, I want to welcome them and wish them much success as they continue to brew, as she likes to say, "The best cup of coffee in Stafford County." Madam Chair, I'd also like to remove item 15 from the consent agenda, and that concludes my report.
Ms. Shelton?
I also had the wonderful opportunity to go to a Court of Honor for a new Eagle Scout, Ian Scanlon. Ian is the fourth-generation Eagle, and I'm sad to say that he has moved on to Maryland, but during that Court of Honor, I encouraged him to bring his leadership back to Stafford County, because we would welcome him with open arms. I also attended a Disability Awareness Day. For those that, last year, it was called Autism Awareness Day, and we changed the name to reflect the larger population of special needs. If you're not aware of this event, it's an annual event put on by our public safety personnel. And, I mean, there are so many different things to do that is inclusive of our special needs population. And I just want to thank our Sheriff's Department for all the work that they've done, they've done, as well as the Fire Department for their displays. I know many of the children, I heard that there was like 500, had a beautiful day of that. And plus, it didn't rain, so that was nice, too. In addition, I went to the FAMPO meeting as well last night. I wanted to talk about that very briefly. As you guys already know, another report has probably come out and said that we have the worst roads in the state. And so, in this new performance measures that's being put out by VDOT, then we were definitely ranked as the worst. And we all sat there and went, "Yeah, we know that." And so, but the idea is, is that to be able to project out for the next four years which projects are going to be, and as long as we continue to rank the worst in some of these different categories, that will improve our scoring in SMART scale. And then, the last thing I wanted to talk about, really has to do with the recusal or the abstention from something that's today on our closed session, and I'm going to read this for you. And so, "I'm voluntary abstaining from any discussion or vote related to the lawsuit entitled Level versus Board of Supervisors, Case Number CL 18003242, this evening and in the future, because the plaintiff is a personal friend of mine, and I wish to avoid any appearance of any impropriety related to this matter." The Clerk will please note my abstention and the reason for the, in the record today, and in the record in any future meetings where the Board discusses or considers this matter. Madam Chairman, I'd like to remove item six.
Okay.
Sorry? Number six. Ms. Bomke?
Okay, just a couple of things. I attended Dr. Janet Gulickson's inauguration as the sixth president of Germanic Community College, and I believe she hit the ground running when she started, and is already doing a great job, and I'm really looking forward to working with her regarding workforce and development here in Stafford County. We have a Joint Schools Working Committee meeting this coming Monday here in our ABC Room with at least a minimum of three members of the School Board. If you're interested in attending that, it's at 6:00 up in the ABC Conference Room. I, too, attended the White Oak Museum Oyster Roast, Oyster Roast, to raise money for the museum, and it was a great day, and a lot of people attended, so, very worthwhile cause. I want to thank our Parks and Rec staff. We had our Fall Festival over at Pratt Park this past Saturday, and I'm telling you, those people were, they were parking cars. We probably could have put 100,000 cars in there, because they had it down to a science. It was a great event, and I know that one of my neighbors, who's very small, attended that and had a great time, and apparently took like a three-hour nap after that. So that's always a good sign. I want to thank Ellie's Elves, specifically Joni Kanazawa and Brandy Quick, along with Danny Payne from Payne Trucking. An idea came about about two weeks, well, it's been three weeks now, and our county staff really helped with this event. They had an idea to, Ellie's Elves helps families who have children that are suffering from cancer, and they just have this passion for helping people in our community. And they had an idea to basically have people come out and give donations and goods that they've purchased, and put them on a truck and send them to North Carolina to help all the victims down there from the hurricane. And this came about very quickly. Fred Presley attended a meeting with Danny Payne like the next day after we found out we were going to try to orchestrate this, and Danny Payne, the owner of Payne Trucking, texted me at 10:30 at night and said, "I'm happy to help. I'll put my truck over there, and I will personally drive it to North Carolina," which he did, October 8th. And I just want to thank everybody in the community that came out and donated their money, donated their time. We had, if you take the Freelance Star, you saw pictures of our Boy Scouts that were at Lowe's that helped with this event. It was just a really wonderful way to pay something forward, and I thank you for everybody that contributed. Lastly, well, I actually have two more things. We did have, as other members said, a GWRC, George Washington Regional Commission meeting in FAMPO last night, and we are going to be working on our memorandum of understanding between those two organizations. It's probably time that we update that. There are some areas of the agreement that could be a little bit more stronger legally, and so you'll see that coming back in the future. And lastly, and very exciting, we have a ribbon cutting on 2/18 in South Stafford tomorrow for Marco's Pizza. Yes, we're getting another restaurant in South Stafford. So that is at 12:30, so hope you can join us. And with that, we will move on to the report of the County Attorney. Ms. McLendon, do you have anything?
No, Madam Chairman, I do not. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Foley?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two items we'd like to have a brief discussion with you on today, and also, for information, we've included the priorities, projects, and initiatives. That's a report that is going to be evolving pretty quickly. As you look at your strategic plan, we will bring a whole different format and so forth to keep track of all the priorities that you all have established and keep you informed about progress. But the two items that we have, first of all, Andrea Light, our Budget Division Director, is going to give us our first quarter financial review, and then staff is here, and I'll provide an overview in relation to the recent water main break on October 2nd that impacted the southeastern part of the county, and answer questions that you all may have regarding that. But with that, I think our Budget Division Director would like to give you the first quarter financial review.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors, Andrea Light, Budget Division Director, with a very quick first quarter financial review. Overall, revenues are projecting on target with our budget. Our real estate and personal property tax bills won't be ready for the next couple of weeks, but sales, meals, and tourism taxes are projecting on target or above our budget at this point, and development fees continue to remain strong. At mid-year, we'll provide the Board with additional detail. Most of our expenditures are tracking as expected. We continue to watch certain areas. We're watching the positive and negative effects of interest rates. We know that the interest rates, the federal fund rates, are going up, and this is creating additional interest revenue, and it's also creating an additional cost of borrowing. However, that cost of borrowing is still less than what we project in the CIP, so we're still under budget. The CSA started fiscal year 2019, 10 students less than it did in fiscal year 2018, so we are off to an optimistic start. But as always, we continue to monitor those fluctuating costs in CSA. We always monitor public safety over time. At this time, we don't see any negative impacts on the budget, but we'll keep you apprised if there is any change. on the budget, but we'll keep you apprised if there is any changes. Health insurance claims continue to be slightly below budget, and our Juvenile Detention Center is currently fluctuating slightly above budget, and that will happen sometimes at the beginning of the year, and it can change throughout the year based on the number of our participants and the length of their stay. Our school staff continues to work on their revenue and expenditure projections. We anticipate that September 30th enrollment will be available shortly, and we'll share this information with the board when it becomes available. We'll continue to monitor revenues and expenditures to ensure we have a balanced budget. And are there any questions that I can answer?
Any questions for Mrs. Light? Ms. Bauer?
We had estimated for CSA, I think it was something like 75,000, 78,000 per child. How, how are we doing on, on that number? 10 below is good, but I think the number is also, the average is also down.
The average is also down. We estimated in the 2019 budget, $72,000 per child.
Okay.
We ended fiscal year 18 at about, in round numbers, $54,000 per child. So we look, we're looking at if this projection stays true, that we would have a, you know, positive variance.
And I want to thank staff for, for all the hard work that they've done on that. I, I know I've asked a, a ton of questions, and it's, it's, I'm grateful that we were able to get some of those, those average costs down as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll move on to a discussion of the water main break on October 2nd that impacted the southeastern part of the county. We wanted to provide you with a briefing of that situation and then answer questions that you may have. We've got staff here that were involved in handling that incident, so if there's any specific questions. We did provide you with a, I think, a pretty good overview of the situation and a timeline very specific to the events that occurred that evening, but I wanted to sum it up with a, a briefing of the situation before any questions that you might have that we could entertain. On October 2nd, 2018, a water main broke near the school bus garage facility on Enon Road. This main is a critical supply line for the area south of South Stafford. Several hours later, the main, the water main was repaired, but the timing of the break, coupled with peak demands, caused an unexpected drop in water levels at the Grafton Water Tank down in the area. This in turn caused widespread outages and low water pressure across southern Stafford County. Staff from Public Works was dispatched to identify the affected areas, flush, and reestablish the system pressure. With the loss of pressure, a possible boil alert, water alert was discussed up the chain of command, along with community engagement determining the need for issuing such a notice. Officials participated in a joint conference call in order to update everyone on the issue, to assess the situation, and to consider the boil water alert. The decision was made triggering outreach to the public and press through various communication channels. And as you all recall, I believe I called you around 10:30 or so in the evening, between 10:30 and 11:30, to give you a heads up that we may need to go to that alert. At that point in time, we hadn't done all that we needed to do to issue the alert. Messages had to be developed, and a lot of work was done to identify the area and so forth. But that was one of the things that I think you all first heard. Public Works has investigated the situation since the event and has determined that the water main break was resulting from an aging pipe initially installed in 1980, and it was the source of the problem. Stafford was, has experienced significant growth, as you're aware, which has placed additional strains on the aging infrastructure. While these type incidents are not unusual in a typical utility system like ours and things that will continue to happen from time to time, measures to renovate and improve our system are included in the capital improvement program and are in various stages of completion. With the construction of Lake Mooney and the Celebrate Virginia Water Tank, significant changes have been made to the water system in South Stafford. As discussed in the review recently during the budget process of the Water and Sewer Master Plan, the water distribution system will continue to grow and be modified over the next five to 10 years. With these changes, new protocols and procedures will be established to mitigate any future incidents like we experienced or to anticipate potential hazards if we do have major breaks like this. While there are, were unpredictable forces at play in this incident, updated processes and procedures will help utilities to monitor the system, communicate needs, and respond most effectively in the future. Staff training will be an integral part of all of those efforts. We also identified areas for improvement with our alert system. While our reach through social media was successful and timely, we had over 45,000 people, 54,000 people engage through social media with the whole incident, and our contact through regular media channels was timely, though we don't control when they issue things and put them on the news and so forth, that was fairly successful as well. Those are some typical ways that we would respond. Along with those successes, however, we identified areas for improvement, in particular in our reverse 911 system. Most of these issues have already been corrected, and some were actually corrected during the event. From one notification to the second, we actually improved some things. But there were issues regarding caller identification messaging that went on the phones, that went out on reverse 911, and the clarity of the voice message itself that folks heard at the initial call. That was actually corrected in subsequent communication. Also, the use of the system to define notification areas, again, this was not a notification across the entire county, so to use this system, you have to actually draw a map and identify which households will be identified. We identified some areas for improvement in that definition of the notification areas, and also identified some different methodologies we're going to have to use in the future to avoid a system overload when there's such a large number of folks to be contacted. Those things all related to reverse 911, areas we've identified, we've already fixed or we're making some final tweaks to be sure as quickly as possible we're in a better position in the future in terms of notifications. For the most part, our Stafford Alert System worked well, but we need to improve some of our internal policies and procedures about how those notifications get out. As an example, we have to have some more staff able to get into that system to send alerts rather than just through our emergency services personnel, which will improve on the timeliness and so forth. I will point out, however, that Stafford Alert, there's only 6,000 residents across the entire county that are on that system, so it isn't, as is the case with all of these different notification methods, we really have to hit a whole bunch of different ways to let the public know. Some were successful and some needed some improvement. Some improvements have already been made. In conclusion, this incident occurred because of an aging pipe in a system that is in the process of being upgraded based on a recently adopted Water and Sewer Master Plan. It occurred during peak demand, which added to the challenges that we faced. However, both in terms of our utility operations and our notification systems and procedures, we have identified areas for improvement, some of which have already been implemented and some which are priorities going forward. I would also like to finish by thanking all of our staff who worked through the response phase of this and the implementation of improvements after the fact. It, it has been and continues to be a strong team effort, and while we certainly have identified areas for improvement and we're underway with that, or if we haven't already implemented them, I have to say, I was really proud of how our staff came together. I think you all know from the timeline, everyone was up all night long working on this and so forth, and we should. We're public servants. We're here for that. This was a challenging situation and a very important one for our public. Fortunately, we, in the end, don't think there were any major health issues as a part of this, but I tell you, our staff really did come together and is working together diligently on any final steps that we need to take to improve this in the future. So that's a brief overview of, of where we stand at this point in time, but if you have some questions related to information I've provided in the board packet or through my comments, we've got a cast of characters here that can answer those questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foley. Any questions for Mr. Foley? Mr. Cohen?
Not so much a question, just a note of praise for the people in the Utilities Department. I know some of them, they live in my neighborhood, so they kept me up to date without me going and getting in their way, which I appreciated. And that was, as you said, it was very impressive what they did. I also appreciate Chief Cardello because there was some questioning about how fire, particularly volunteers, would know about no water pressure in different parts of the county and how to deal with it, and he was very receptive to people's concerns and has already acted on them and had procedures in place to deal with that, and that was very much appreciated by people. And I, and though I was home that week, I was amazed at the number of people who contacted me with how adroitly water got to the schools before 5:00 in the morning. So there was bottled water in place to deal with it, and there was just great praise for whoever, and I've never heard who. So whoever took care of that, people throughout the buildings were very appreciative of their handling of that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
And I would comment, I think that's a great example of the coordination that went on between the school system, utilities, and the rest of our staff. We, we had some water that we were able to provide. They also ordered some water, so it was a good communication throughout the process.
I, I just want to thank you for your leadership and what you've already done and what happened with staff from when it happened until we actually lifted the alert. We made those changes, as you indicated, and I think this was a, if, for no other word, a, a good trial run. And one of the questions I have, and I brought this up at GWRC last night, is, and we do have a regional emergency management team, is are we working collaboratively as a region on some kind of a reverse 911? And you don't have to answer me right now, but I think that's something that we might want to consider down the road, is, and I, I say that because what we found out in this, which you just indicated, is everybody has a different way of receiving communication. And I would like to tell people that if you have what you think is a landline called Stafford Talk, no, not Stafford Talk, Straight Talk, that is not a landline, and so those people did not receive the reverse 911 call, even though you, some may think it's a landline, it is not. So anyway, and, and thank you to staff. It, it was a big event, and I was up till 3:00 in the morning putting things on my Facebook page just because I thought if one person sees it and shares it, you know, that, that's how it spreads. And, you know, I appreciate your leadership because I think that is really what's going to help us in the event, God forbid, we have some other incident that we couldn't prevent.
Well, I can tell you, everybody stepped up and, and has continued to do that so as we, as we get ourselves prepared for any other event we might experience in the future.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the priority projects is just for your information, so now we're moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion in a second to approve the consent minus number six and number 15?
So move.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Cast your vote? Tally the Motion passes unanimously with one absent. We'll start with Ms. Shelton on item number six.
Mr. Foley, speaking of cast of characters, who can answer questions about the landscaping?
Cindy, can you move your mic up just a hair?
Jeff Harvey, our planning director, can answer those questions.
Could you restate your question?
Yeah, I'll restate. I had just asked Mr. Foley who would be the right person to come up and answer a question I had about this. I'm going to go to a very specific page. I don't expect you to remember it all, but this is on, for those that are reading, this is on attachment to page two, section 22-153, laws for required buffers.
Yes, ma'am.
When I read that, I wanted to make sure that, does our verbiage force all, all developments to have HOAs in their subdivisions?
In regards to HOAs that, or subdivisions that have buffers, yes, because they would be required to have common open space for that buffer area, so the buffer area would not be on residential lots, so therefore, an HOA would have to maintain it. Further down that section, it talks about A1 and A2 zone properties, and they're exempted from that requirement, specifically A1 and A2 zone properties, number one, have fewer buffers that are required, and two, our current cluster ordinance allows open space to be sold to an individual rather than an HOA in case of large tract land being used for forestry or farming. So those are the two exceptions there.
Okay, that makes sense. I have some other comments. I don't think that you need to respond to them, Mr. Harvey, because they weren't directed to you. During the course of when this, modifications were being made to this particular standard, then I thought I had communicated really well, both at the CEDC level and to the Planning Commission, some recommended inclusions, and I don't see any of those. And so, for example, I'm retired military, so I've been to many, many countries and different states, and one of the things that I saw missing was the inclusion of zero scaping. Zero scaping is a concept of planning landscape, in landscaping, so that you do not require additional watering and irrigation systems. And so, there's nothing in ours that allows for the, or, or even it as an alternative. And I think that we should encourage people to use those kind of systems. In addition, I didn't see an inclusion or an consideration for natural buffer areas. And I think that when you look back for the last year, when we talked about cluster developments and our desire to keep a rural landscape and have that look and feel, then it only makes sense that at the same time, we would be upgrading this document to be able to provide or to encourage people to have that natural landscaping, and specifically wildlife areas. We don't give an alternative for individuals to not put in, I would say manicured landscape, even though it's not exactly manicured, but it doesn't, we don't give them alternative to put in a natural wildlife area, like in some states and in some countries, where you have a small sign that said, "This is natural." So you're allowing certain parts of the land to return back to its natural state, and I think that we should have those opportunities, inclusion. And I have some recommended verbiage to add to this as we send it back, because what I'd like to do, and I'm not making the proposal yet, but what I'd like to do is send this back to the subcommittee that was working on this. Can I do that, Ms. Rashida? Can I send this directly back to the planning subcommittee?
Madam Chair, I think this may be more of a, a issue of board process than it is a legal matter.
Oh, yes.
And I think if there's any disconnect here, it's staff being unsure about the, the entire board's desire to make additional changes. But certainly, if the board wants to do that, it can go back to committee and, and those things can be discussed. I'm not sure what process we used specifically with developing specific language. That isn't typically done sort of in the works of the CEDC Committee of the Board, but if the board wants to give some direction to some things that would reflect what Ms. Shelton is, is, is suggesting, we would just like to look, to get some clear direction from the board on that.
Okay. Let me take, I'm sorry, let me, let me take a stab at it. For example, and I was on the CEDC, and I thought I'd asked for these inclusions, and so I was surprised when they didn't have those.
Yeah, I don't know that they, I'm not sure if they came to the board and there was a vote to, to make amendments. I think there was some general discussion, so it may have just been a disconnect on what the board's intent was, what the committee's intent was.
Yeah, I will.
Madam Chairman and Supervisor Shelton, I apologize. I recall that discussion is CEDC Committee, and part of, sometimes with regulations, it's not exactly what the regulation says, what it doesn't say. In particular, our landscaping manual gives people the opportunity to ask for a credit for existing vegetation. In fact, we incentivize people to apply for a credit because the larger, the trees they have on their site, the more plant units they get credit for. So in that way, that gets somewhat to your point about conserving natural areas, because if a developer chooses to leave an area alone, it's, already has substantial vegetation, they may not have to plant any additional landscaping in that particular area. Also, with zero scaping, our ordinance does not require that anyone install irrigation systems. It does say that the property owner is obligated to maintain their landscaping. And in this amendment, we're also eliminating a specific listing of plants that are required. So that gives the, the person that's developing the property flexibility in what types of plants they use, so they could plants they use, so they could try a zero scape type of planting regimen if they would like to. So there's nothing in it prohibits them, but it's not specifically called out that they have to adhere to it, a zero scape design that is.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to force people to do that. I just wanted to give them the opportunity. And so I'll give you an example, and you can answer this example, and then I can decide what I'm going to do. For example, where we have natural buffers, and so in those natural buffers, I've seen within the county where we've also required the developer, the owner, to put in certain trees along the natural buffer. And that seemed kind of crazy to me, that why would I need that for a transition? So is that just an anomaly, or has that been resolved here?
Well, Supervisor Shelton, that may be something we need to continue to look in and discuss. When we get into the issue of buffers, you may have one property that's undeveloped, that's fully wooded, and has a, in essence, a natural buffer. But you have a property that's being developed, a redevelopment, redeveloped adjacent to it. And the question is, do you make that redeveloping parcel, put in landscaping adjacent to this already wooded area? And part of that goes to also timing of what's happening on the various properties. We don't know when the adjacent property might develop, so who's responsible for what landscaping may end up being determined in the future versus the present?
I have a question. In the particular instance, so on our buffers, we have a certain width requirement. Is it possible that the reason they had to plant trees along the buffer is because the width wasn't as wide as it was supposed to be, so they left? Let's say on one area, you have a 15-foot width requirement, they had 10 of natural, and so they had to make up for the other five. Would that cause them to plant additional trees in order to get to that 15 feet, potentially?
Ms. Mauer, it may give you the effect of that. We have a certain number of plant units that you have to meet and standardized width. They can, the developer can get a reduction in the standardized width through an administrative review process, provided that this plant would be able to survive. So oftentimes, what happens in those situations, the developer may choose to plant more trees because they're higher value, they have higher credits. So the trees may look more dense than you would have seen in a wider buffer.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Harvey?
Madam Chair?
Wait, I think Mr. Cohen has something.
Just real quickly, because I was on the Planning Commission and served, actually, started on the subcommittee for this, so I know there's a, some people did a great deal of work on this. Two quick questions, Jeff, if I could. One, A, is this time sensitive?
Mr. Cohen, this is not time sensitive.
Okay. And then B, if I read, if I'm reading it correctly, it's to send it to the Planning Commission to hold the public hearing and recommend final changes. So in theory, if this was sent, if this was approved and we sent it to the Planning Commission for a public hearing, they could make changes that could incorporate the different issues that Ms. Shelton raised if she wanted to, as long as it's, and Ms. McLennan will be familiar with me from saying it this way, but as well as it's under the certain parameters. But if it goes past that, then they can't include it.
Correct, Supervisor Cohen. The board in its referral could specify, "We want you to look at certain things and incorporate them into this amendment in the final version before it goes to public hearing." And as structured, the Planning Commission would have latitude to also make other changes that it identified prior to holding the hearing. Once the hearing is advertised, then it gets into the question, how many changes can be made after the advertisement's been issued in the paper and the public has received notice?
Okay, and then last question, if I could. I know certain items have a 60-day clock that hits as soon as we vote. Some have other date lines, some is 90. Is, what would this one be?
Under normal circumstances, this would fall under 100-day time limit for the Planning Commission to look at and make changes, hold a hearing, and take a vote, because this is by reference in the zoning ordinance.
So they have until basically after the first of the year before they'd have to...
Yes, it'd be 100 days from their next regular meeting after the board takes action.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Harvey? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Okay, so we'll bring this back. Ms. Shelton?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to propose that we amend Resolution 18218 to refer it to the Planning Commission and refer it to the Planning Commission with the addition of a consideration for changes to improve our verbiage to allow natural wildlife areas.
Do you want to include any zero escaping language?
I would like to include, yes, thank you for saying that. And I'd like to include the word zero escaping and the understanding of what that means, because I think that's important for people to recognize that it's a viable alternative, and it's not that it's just missing and we're giving them the latitude, but they know that we support that concept.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I'm chairman, I'd like to offer substitute to refer this back to the CEDC Committee.
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second to refer this back to CEDC. All right, Ms. Mauer?
Okay. So with all due respect, and I, Mr. Cohen had brought up the issue of timing. And this is a time-sensitive issue, and we've had a number of commercial developers come in, and the amount of landscaping requirements that we have is quite onerous to them. Virginia Linen specifically is one of them, in which we have so many trees required by our landscaping buffer that it's becoming, number one, difficult for them to bring in their commercial properties. And number two, we don't look at it from a mature growth perspective, and so these plantings become so huge that you can no longer see the commercial building once they're at full capacity. I appreciate the fact that the resolution itself gives the Planning Commission some latitude in order to make adjustments, and I would ask my colleagues to send this on to the Planning Commission, because this is having an effect on our commercial development.
I was not aware of that. Mr. Harvey just said this is not time-sensitive. I was not aware that commercial development was being hampered by our current ordinances. I know we had some issues with Virginia Linen, but they were not only concerning a lot more than this. So I still think this needs to go back to committee. This hasn't been scrubbed. This is not, hasn't been thought through. But if the board chooses to send it on to planning, I'll support.
Any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Cohen?
Just for, Jeff, for logistics standpoint, if we send it back to the Planning Commission, they can send it back to their commission, their subcommittee to look at it before they have the 100 days, so they could send it to their committee to scrub it, or to massage it, or to water it, or whatever they want to do with the foliage.
Supervisor Cohen, that's correct. They can establish a subcommittee and look at it further and modify changes. And just to clarify, my comment about not time-sensitive was in reference to, so far the board hasn't said there's a specific timeline which we need to meet. So if the board sets timeline, then we'll all follow suit.
Okay. All right, Mr. Cavallier?
Well, we've introduced some new ideas today, and so it's, we usually take that up in a committee before we send it down to Planning Commission. So we're kind of bypassing that step with the addition of the new information that we just talked about today. So, you know, I just wanted to point that out.
So first, let's vote on the substitute motion to send it back to the committee. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Oh. Okay. All right. Okay, so now cast your vote to send it to the Planning Commission with the additional language that Ms. Shelton incorporated for additional consideration for the national wild, land...
Wildlife areas.
Wildlife areas and the zero escaping. All right, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Hold your finger down, please, so it casts your vote. Okay, that motion passes. Four to two with one absent. Okay, moving right along to item number 15. Mrs. Mauer?
All right, very quickly, I had a meeting with Keith today, and he informed me that we might have a little bit more difficulty on the, some language in the state legislation regarding dams. And so he and both Mike Smith have asked me to add to our legislative priorities an opportunity for staff to come up with some language that will help all of our private dams here in Stafford County. Evidently, some of the requirements and how they're interpreting state language is adding significant cost to the repairs, and considering we have just implemented two service districts, both in the south for Lake Carroll and one at Lake Arrowhead, I would like staff to work on some language to help clarify the needs and just want to add that to the resolution. And with that, I will make a motion.
Okay, have a motion for R. 18-229 on our legislative priorities with that add-on. Any discussion? Okay, cast your vote. Tally the vote with that motion and the add-on. That motion passes unanimously with one absent. Okay, going on to, we have two items of new business. First is, Ms. Kathy Baker's going to be here to discuss our application for matching funds for some money that just became available for the PDR program. So Ms. Baker, and then I do want to let the board know that this is time-sensitive, and so if the board, the will of the board is to move forward with this, we would have to rescind our, rescind our bylaws.
Not rescind.
Not rescind.
Set aside.
Set aside our bylaws. And we need a two-thirds vote of that. Okay, Ms. Baker?
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. As you're aware, we have 11 purchase of development right applications from the 2017 application round. And in June, you all had authorized us to proceed with four of those easement acquisitions with the funds that we had available at that time. We have submitted matching fund applications for those current four properties. So since then, with our latest tally after the year-end of FY18, we now have additional rollback funds, so there is about 544,000 unallocated funds at this time. Just earlier this month, the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services announced a new FY19 matching funds application round. They have about 633,000 available, and that is for statewide applications. There are about six current active PDR programs throughout the state, so we're, we would anticipate getting about 105,000. We currently have 61,000 in VDAX funds from last year. But unlike the other three matching fund sources we have, the VDAX is not property-specific, so we would just apply for the funds. They would come back to us if we're, let us know the amount of funds that we may receive. And then at that time, we would come back with any of the remaining eligible properties in our pool of applicants and ask you to move forward at that time. They typically notify us by December, January timeframe. So with that, as I stated, the, well, as Ms. Bomke stated, the application deadline is November 2nd, so we are deeming this time-sensitive since we need to complete that application before your next board meeting.
Any questions for Ms. Baker? Okay, we appreciate you bringing this to us, even though it is time-sensitive. Sometimes that's how the state operates.
Thank you.
You have a motion?
I'll make a motion to set aside our bylaws.
Okay, have a motion to suspend our bylaws. Any discussion? Ms. Mauer?
Okay, so as you all know, I haven't been a huge supporter of PDR, but however, this is applying for grant funding, which means more money into Stafford County, so I will be supporting setting aside the bylaws.
All right, any other discussion? Cast your vote for suspending the bylaws for this item. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Okay, do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, have a motion for R. 18-252 in a second. Any discussion? Okay, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Again, thank you, Ms. Baker, for bringing that to our attention. Okay, our next item is item number 18. The county's administration discuss our board of supervisors' vision statement and our strategic plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you all will look at your place, you should have a copy of this document, which is the draft of the county's first strategic plan. This document began with your two-day facilitated off-site meeting to talk about the long-range future of Stafford County. That included consideration of the challenges that we're faced with, with growth and funding schools and building courts and a number of other things, and looking really 20 years out into the future and saying, what do we want Stafford to look like at that point in time? That was sort of the origin of having a discussion about what are, your vision was of the future, what areas were the most important to address, the strategic areas, and then what the priorities would be within, in each of those target areas, if you will. You all spent time specifically developing three-year priorities and future states in each of these areas. And those areas include what you have before you on the second page, healthy growth, responsive transportation system, the heartbeat of recreation, history, and culture, quality educational opportunities, a vibrant and exciting business community, dedicated and responsive public safety team, and organizational excellence. Those were areas that maybe the titles have been slightly reworded, but they really reflect what you all identified as priority areas. We took the work that you put together, the beginnings of a vision statement, these seven priority areas and priorities that you had identified, and really took a look at your intent and tried to clarify and get it into a place that would be actionable by staff and understandable by our public about what's most important to you. And so there have been some changes. The attachment that you had in your board packet was what came out of the meeting, and what's in this document that you see before you is how that's been slightly tweaked to try to be really clear about priorities. I will say to you that the document that you have right now doesn't have all of the very specific things that you identified, but those were used to clarify the statement. And what we'll do after we're sure that this is the direction that reflects your priorities is those items will appear in work plans. So specifically, a study on the public safety facility, which you identified as a critical thing for the future to train our public safety staff. That will be in an action plan that says we're going to do a study by a certain date that will then give you the information to amend the CIP, as an example. But what you have before you now reflects the direction we think that you gave to us, and we're looking for you to look at that, validate it, change it, tweak it however you think we should, to be sure about the direction, because this document ultimately is going to drive staff in a way different than we've been driven in the past. It's much more focused on what you think is most important, so 20 years from now, we can achieve that vision that you set out. It will then drive work plans in departments. It'll be reflected in the budget proposal we put before you, the five-year financial plan reflected. It's a way for us to not just go month-to-month and guess at what you want, but instead to get clear direction from you about what's most important for us to focus on. And I will work with staff to get us all aligned towards that. Doesn't mean there won't be other things that come along that we have to deal with, and there'll still be some operational issues we've got to deal with, too. But this represents really best practice in businesses and government in terms of staying focused on what's most important to make a difference. So with that said, we have it before you for your consideration. We don't expect that you're going to give us everything today, but if you have some input at this point in time, we will have it back in front of you again in November. And there's actually kind of a three-week break in here, a little bit longer break than normal, and would be glad to get any input from you between now and then as well, that we would then bring back on the 7th of November. So with that... of November. So with that said, Madam Chair, I'll just turn it back over to you all for discussion and some, any direction you want to provide.
Okay. Any comments for staff? Mrs. Mauer?
I just want to thank you. I appreciate the amount of work that went into this. I know that the board met for two days and had some very lengthy, meaningful conversations that went into this document, and I think it's an excellent start to guiding our future as, as we move forward. If we could also include on our action items, a, a line in which what we're doing when we, you know, approve a resolution, how that ties back into the items that are listed here. I think that would be important in order to, to close that loop as, and as we also start to develop metrics and whatnot, that would, that would be incredibly helpful.
One way that I would suggest we do this is actually that we amend our background reports to have a section that says what, what does this action tie to in the strategic plan, and that's something we'll do moving forward.
All right, yeah, no, great work. And I appreciate you letting everybody study it before it goes to final print.
I really do just want to say there was a tremendous amount of staff work done. We, we actually had a two-day off-site, too, with some facilitation. We pulled in staff members that aren't part of our leadership team, but that really know about these areas to get the expertise to, to feed into what you all provided to us. And I would just say that the, the graphics in the work here is really excellent work by our communications staff and Andrew in particular, in terms of the skills that he's brought to the job. So we feel good about the result of that. We know you may give some new direction to it, but I think it's a, we feel like it's a great start as well.
I find it very exciting and invigorating for our staff, our community at large. So thank you for all your efforts here. Okay, with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Snellings if he'll read us into closed session, and we have, we will be certifying on two different motions when we come out.
Whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to item one, Aty versus Stafford County, and item two, Lovell versus Stafford County, where such consideration or briefing and open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the board, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A7, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cast your vote, tally the vote. The board is now in closed session. Yeah, I'm sorry, it's CM eighteen-dash-nineteen-A1 in parentheses. So I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion? Cast your vote, tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. The second item to certify is CM eighteen-dash-nineteen in parentheses, A2.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cast your vote, tally the vote. Everyone, motion that we certified in closed session, Mr. Dudenheffer is absent and Ms. Shelton abstained. Thank you. We will return at seven o'clock. Meeting. I'm going to lead us this evening in the prayer, and then we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance by Cub Scouts Pack two-one-three. So I'll call you up in just a moment. If everybody could please rise. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together today to represent the citizens of Stafford County. Father, we pray for your guiding wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interest and issues of our times, and we pray for the ability to work together even when there is honest disagreement. Lord, we pray for the five families in Virginia that died in the floodwaters and Lieutenant Brad Clark from Hanover County, who was a firefighter, who was struck and killed by a tractor trailer while traveling to the scene of an accident. And Lord, we need your help in supporting all of the victims and families in Mexico City and Panama City, whose lives were devastated during Hurricane Michael. Their lives have been destroyed and they're starting over, in many cases, with nothing. Please guide and support these families as they rebuild their lives one day at a time. Lord, please comfort all these families as they've been hurt in these tragic events and lift them up with your grace and love as they begin the healing process. And lastly, Lord, please continue to support our first responders and our military, both near and far, as they work to protect us from harm and destruction and the freedom we enjoy every day. In your name we pray, amen. And now, if Den Pack two-one-three could please come up, and they are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. So I just want to thank, while they're going back to their chairs, just want to thank the pack leader, Mr. Mark Crop, right here, and assistant pack leaders, Mickey Crop and Mark Enfinger. So thank you for everything you do with your, your Den Pack every day. We will now have presentations by the public. If you would like to comment, please remain courteous and respectful to members of the audience and to the board. If you're here to speak about one of this evening's public hearings, please hold your comments until that public hearing is being opened. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. Speak slowly and clearly into the microphone and begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light on the podium to monitor your time. Green indicates the start of your remarks. Yellow indicates that you have one minute to summarize your comments, and red means your time is up. Let's see, I do not have any speaker card, so I'll just ask if there's anyone in the dais that would like to address the board on any topic, please come forward.
Am I going to do my thing now?
If you, are you here to speak about one of the public hearings?
Yeah.
Okay, then if you could wait until that public hearing, then we'll make sure your comments are then. Thank you.
Paul Waldowski, Eight Picket Lane. I brought my shirt, just so you know who I am. All right, let's give you all an update of what's going on in the county. As you know, we've had lots of rain, so the subdivision off Shelton Shop Road has been getting lots and lots of soil put in there. Hopefully, none of those houses will get a sinkhole down the road. Let's see, I reported potholes on six-ten. Those should be fixed ahead of fourteen-oh-four and twelve-fifteen. I went through Walpool, and I found a pothole, but I don't live there. I think one of you supervisors live off there. I was going to check the distance between how far a supervisor lives to another supervisor. I think that'd be very interesting. I was at the school board the other day, and they have this nice map. It's really neat to see, because you see how we have this little circle here, and when we redistrict this county, boy, Hartwood will look really nice as the southwest district. And remember George Washington? That used to be part of King George before it was gerrymandered. So that's all Stafford at one time. I don't know if you've seen all the fuss at the school board these days, but see, they color-code everything. Isn't that neat, just like a rainbow? Isn't that interesting? And it's just amazing to me how somebody's school board members have one school, and we have a school board member, and we pay them twelve thousand dollars a year. Just amazing. As you all know, we have a new superintendent. He only gets two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars annually, plus all the perks. That means in four years, he'll be the million-dollar man. And my latest thing is these churches are moving into our public schools. I'm a taxpayer. They don't pay taxes. I took a picture on the Monqueer Elementary School, and like I said to the school board members, I don't care how much rent you get from them, or how much revenue you get from them, they don't belong in our schools. And it's just a matter of time, where the country is working really hard to remove churches out of public facilities.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Okay, with that, we'll close that part of our presentations. This evening, we have five public hearings. The first public hearing will consider granting an easement to Dominion Energy on county-owned property in the George Washington District. Mr. Towery.
Good evening, members of the board. Jason Towery, Director of Public Works. This, this presentation was actually done at the last meeting, and we had, we had the error in the advertisement, so we'll go through this again. My apologies for that incorrect advertisement. R eighteen-two-oh-five, resolution authorizing the county administrator to grant a permanent utility easement on county-owned land to Dominion Power, or Dominion Energy, I'm sorry. In 2012, the county and VDOT entered into a programmatic agreement whereby the, the county received or became eventually the owner of those tax map parcels, fifty-three D one forty-eight through fifty-three D one fifty-one. This was down at the Falmouth intersection. As part of the VDOT project that occurred at the time, they did a lot of work down there, and one of the things that occurred was Dominion Virginia Power relocated a portion of their utility onto the property that eventually was conveyed to the county. At the time, VDOT and Dominion were unable to come to an agreement or something happened, where they weren't able to, timing-wise, get their agreements in place before the county received the property, so that when we received the property, the utility was in place, but the easement was not. So Dominion Power and VDOT have requested that the county consider conveying this thirty-foot-wide easement to Dominion. The board, of course, is required to hold a public hearing anytime an easement such as this is granted. So just again, a brief overview of the site, and I'm going to try these pens again here. Hopefully I'm successful, but there again, let's see if I can get this thing. Here is Route seventeen and Butler Road. This is Route one here, and of course, there's the site in red. And here's a close-up shot of the plat, this was before the consolidation of the four parcels. You can see here the alignment of the easement. That's where the power line is currently. It is underground. And here's a picture of the site, of course, one of the wayfinding signs there on the site, and of course, the, the clear land, you get an idea of where we are. And that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time. Again, my apologies for the incorrect advertisement last time.
Any questions for Mr. Towery? Okay, thank you. We'll now open this up to the public. I'm opening the public hearing. The same rules apply that I read earlier. You have three minutes to speak. Would anyone like to address the board on this easement?
Paul Waldowski, Eight Picket Lane. Sorry, West Virginia lost to the same team Oklahoma State did.
Mr. Waldowski, you need to stay on topic, please.
Ooh, seventy-five more days till January first. Number one, if you can give the use of land to churches, you are giving the use of land to, I guess, VDOT, right? Very dumb on transportation. They can't get along with others. And you have this labeled as the George Washington District, and I just want all the citizens to be aware. You saw the Gary Melcher sign, which is in Falmouth. And I believe that they should pay some kind of rental for this thirty feet. There's no such thing as free land. It's called location, location, location. And their wires are laying there, and they could create a public safety issue. So we could have a reserve fund, so in case something happens in Falmouth, oh, I mean, the George Washington District, then you could call a first responder.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board on this item? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing, and we're going to bring Resolution R eighteen-dash-two-oh-five back to the board. Mr. Cohen, this is in your district.
Yes, I move for approval of R one-eight-dash-two-zero-five.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just very quickly, we had this last month, and then we, we're all moving forward, and it just was deferred, delayed because of a wrong advertisement. We have corrected that. This is already in place, so this is just, uh, moving things along. So let's move the meeting along, and I'll stop talking.
All right, thank you. Cast your vote, tally the vote. The motion passes with one absent. Thank you. Our next public hearing is to consider an amendment to county code requiring that drain fields be located on the lots they serve. Mr. Harvey.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Board members. This public hearing is to consider adoption of ordinance oh-eighteen-dash-seventeen, which would amend the subdivision chapter of the county code, as well as ordinance oh-eighteen-dash-eighteen, which would amend the sewer and water standards chapter of the county code. In March, the board referred these two proposed amendments to the Planning Commission and Utilities Commission for consideration. The impetus for this was concerns about existing community drain fields that we have in the county and their lack of maintenance and operational problems, as well as, in some cases, failures. The board had noted that we'd seen a few recent cluster subdivision plans that came through that proposed community drain fields, and had concerns that this may pose additional problems in the future for the county should those systems fail. Oftentimes, when those types of systems have problems or failures, the homeowners may request the county to consider taking over the systems or providing public water and sewer service to those properties. That can be a substantial cost to the county, as well as utility ratepayers, if the county were to take over those types of systems. The Planning Commission Board, excuse me, the Planning Commission and Utilities Commission held their public hearings in May. Both had recommended adoption of the ordinances. Ordinance eighteen-eighteen dealt with the utilities standards and specified that there be a minimum dispersal design capacity of a hundred and fifty gallons per day per bedroom, and a minimum treatment capacity of three hundred gallons per day per dwelling, and made a clarification. That was based on staff's discussion with the Health Department and concerns about the dispersal capacity for a drain, community drain field and its ability to handle multiple dwellings. The subdivision ordinance amendment specifically states that the- Uh, the subdivision ordinance amendment specifically states that the drain field for new subdivisions have to be located on a lot that it's served. In other words, a community drain field would not be allowed for a new residential subdivision. And regarding other aspects of the ordinance, currently, the subdivision ordinance does not allow for easements for off-site drain fields. The exception was for community drain fields. Now, the utilities ordinance is being amended to only allow off-site easements for community drain fields in the case of a waiver being granted by the utilities director. And that'd be after detailed information had been provided to him from a soil scientist verifying the difficulties with the operation of the current system. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Harvey? Mrs. Shelton.
Mr. Harvey, is it required for the county to take over property or even mass drain fields, people that don't take care of their property?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Shelton, no, there is no obligation, I'm aware of, that the county has to take over maintenance of any private utility system.
So why do we?
Ms. Shelton, I'm not aware of us taking over a specific private utility system. We do have a program in the county for pump and haul, which essentially allows us to help the property owner who has a failing system to retain, stay in their home until such time that either a alternative has been found for sewage disposal on that property, or a public sewer is eventually extended to that property.
Mrs. Mauer.
So what happens to a property if it doesn't have appropriate sewage disposal system? Does it become condemned? What happens to these homeowners?
Ms. Mauer, if someone has a failing system and the Health Department declares it a public health hazard, they could potentially be told to leave the premises.
And how much is pump and haul costing the average homeowner who is currently paying for it, paying for it themselves?
Ms. Mauer, I'd have to defer to Mr. Towery with regards to the pump and haul program.
So the average homeowner right now is, for the most part, on our subsidized program, I think is what you're referring to?
Subsidized or unsubsidized? I mean, there's, how much does it cost on average per month to pump and haul a house, I guess is the question?
I believe, and I'm...
You want me to help you?
Well, I, I'm trying to think here for a minute of, we've, we've had rates sometimes as high as we've paid up to $700 per home per month. It's not uncommon, now that, that would be fairly high, but $100 per 1,000 gallons, if you will, is about the right rate. So average home using, say, 4,000 or 5,000 gallons per month, $400 to $500 potentially.
Okay. Mr. Cohen?
Mr. Harvey, I just, um, just to verify, the vote in the Planning Commission was, was it four to two?
Yes.
Um, I believe it was not unanimous.
Okay, and was there any discussions as to the two? Did they give reasoning why they voted no, or? I mean, I saw where it was deferred from a vote, a motion by Mr. English, but I just was curious, I was going through, and I didn't see the arguments by the people who voted no, so I just wanted to see if we had a nutshell of that.
Um, I think some of the commissioners felt that this may, community drain fields may be a desirable alternative for certain community situations. I don't recall specific discussions.
Thank you. I noticed people wanted no, and voted yes, that's why. Thank you.
Mr. Snellings.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Harvey, why would a developer or whoever's building want a community drain field? What are the benefits to them? Rather than just putting a regular drain field for every lot? What is the benefit of doing community? Is it money, or is it?
Mr. Snellings, it would be potentially beneficial for someone who has a piece of property that has poor soil conditions in certain locations, and good soil conditions in others. So that would further facilitate them to potentially cluster their development to one area of the property.
Okay, and I noticed you've listed six different community drain fields that we currently have. Uh, two of them appear to be in trouble. Uh, and one of them, which is actually in my district, um, has absolutely no money to correct it. And the other one, which is not in my district, uh, seems to be that they're kind of struggling to make those repairs. Is there a possibility that this one that has absolutely no money to fix this, and these are a lot of residents that live there? I won't mention the location. Is there a possibility that the Health Department will step in and say, "You've all got to vacate"?
Mr. Snellings, I can't speak for the Health Department, but if they, I would assume if they declare that the failing drain field's creating a health hazard, then they'll make the property owner take appropriate action.
And if they don't take appropriate action?
They may ask the property owner to vacate the property.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Harvey. I'm sorry. Oh, okay. All right, so now at this point in time, we're going to open the public hearing. You have three minutes to speak. Would anyone like to address the board on the community drain field?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Danny Hatch. I live at 13260 Suliman Road, Goldvein, Virginia. I'm your local soil scientist. Well, Mr. Harvey, thank you for answering so much questions about the soils. As far as my feelings on this, this is a bad idea. There are places that community systems will much better serve the citizens of Stafford County. Uh, we deal with failing drain fields all the time. Uh, I have a situation right now where I have a client that will be going to individual systems, like this is proposing, where it was a community system, and I guarantee you it'll be 90-plus percent alternative systems on this particular subdivision. Community system would much better serve that particular project. I'm going to be short and sweet. Here are my comments. Absolutely no HOA should own a community system. Absolutely should be owned by a private utility company. Many of these comments I heard tonight, back in the 1970s, 1980s, that would be true. This day and age, 2018, community systems have to be pre-treated. They are heavily regulated, they're heavily tested on a, on a periodical basis, so they are functioning properly. The private utilities companies are regulated by the SEC, just like the, the public utility companies are. The only thing that I would recommend that the county look at is that right now, they have to be owned by a private utility if it's 50 lots or more. This is where something y'all could step in and go, "Oh, community systems." Well, there's three people, 10, 10 homes, or 49 homes be owned and operated by a private utility company. That is my comments. As you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the board chambers like to address the board?
Hi, Madam Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Vicki Toy, and I live at 255 Rebel Road, but I didn't know Dan, in fact, I was going to call Danny today, I didn't know he was going to show up. He's my best septic friend, he's put in two of my septic systems, and I've built two custom homes all by myself in Stafford County. And I was offering my opinion to Cindy today, who told me to show up. So I thought the best thing to do was just read you what I wrote Cindy about my opinion. And first, start off by saying what I'm hearing tonight, even though I don't know very much about this, what I'm hearing tonight is a couple of conversations. One is, what do we do about the failing septic systems that are going on right now? I hear that as a distinction from what do we do in the future, and I feel like I need to raise a voice in opposition to what we're doing right now. And this is what I told Cindy. And if the question is, on the table is whether I support prohibition of raw land improvement, if the only septic solution that is permitted by law or by soil work would be not on the subject water in a shared, a shared community, then my answer would be no. I wouldn't support limiting present or future solutions to develop concerning any building, building system, including septic systems. There are many successful shared septic systems, alternative systems, as well as other solutions that have been deployed and developed over the years that, that I've been building, that have allowed people the option to realize the American dream of buying and building. Limits on the ability of anyone to develop on their own property or to consider rural living will undermine the argument we're making for broadband, Cindy and I have been talking about broadband, which is that everyone needs all the services that would be afforded by means of technology to make our lives better, and our communities worth more to ourselves and our children. To suggest that alternative septic solutions are bad suggests that technology that allows septic systems to function well is not clearly understood. Septic systems that are designed and maintained correctly are environmentally friendly. I've built three of them, and then I go on to tell her about various ones that I've been involved in. And I think that limiting these also will limit our local building and trade economy, which has long-term downstream negative effects. And I also work part-time for a local builder, so I've seen successful septic systems be deployed and maintained correctly. They're extremely environmentally friendly, and I think that what you need to do when you consider this issue is to separate the, the, the bad stuff in the past and resolve those as a separate issue, and not, not further limit what we can do with the advancement of technology and all these kinds of systems that allow us to, to live in Stafford. Those are my comments. If anyone has any questions.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Joe Knight. I live at 103 Nautical Cove. I, I worry that this is a knee-jerk reaction to some things that occurred in the past where things were not well-planned or designed as they should have been. However, some were, and I can give you an example. Canterbury Estates, I think, was the first subdivision in this county of that nature to have a private system. Now, I may question Gersonville Estates, but that system runs, operates just like a public utilities. It takes the sewer, or the sewer lines along the roads in Canterbury Estates, and allows for a very expensive waterfront subdivision. I think 13 homes it will accommodate, maybe more. It, it had 12 points initially that we wouldn't have had due to the high water table, had it not been for this. And it's been for almost 30 years, probably. I lose track of time. Very successful. It is a system that, that the, the members of the community pay monthly fees, such as public utility fees, approximately the same amount, except ours have been going up a lot. And it pumps it up to a five-acre drain field, an elevated area that perked beautifully. And it has been most successful for approximately 30 years, as I'm saying. It was the first, it was rejected by Stafford County. They went to the Health Department in Richmond, and they overruled, and it was installed. Now, I know there are alternative systems that we're not using in the county, that the black light system, to my knowledge, isn't. That kills bacteria, even if, you know, if there's a body of water, a pond, or stream, or something nearby, which I think we've got experts here who could discuss that with you. I think, I think some of these systems make almost any place work at this point in time. If you're not trying to build on a wetland, you can make it work, I do believe, and successfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Okay, would anyone else like to address the board?
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name's Ryan Faruki. I reside at 262 New Hope Church Road. I actually came here not really prepared to speak about this. I came because a client asked that I come, and I can here to say that I can be the industry expert on this, because I literally design almost every alternative drain field that goes in this county. I do work for Danny Hatch, Eminem Soils, you name them. I've designed them, I do about 200 to 250 a year. I, I design these individual systems. Did the one, jumping branch, did alternative design for jumping branch. I will tell you from, regarding, just to answer maybe some of the questions about the failing drain fields, the technology is so vastly superior today than, than what it is. We actually don't even need soil dispersion, to be quite frank. The water that comes out of these systems is cleaner than any water that runs down a roadside ditch. Um, you know, in, in the pact about failing systems, if they have a failing system, they can pick up the phone and call me or call Danny. We have, the Health Department has a litany of mechanisms to allow these failing drain fields to get rectified. We can do direct discharge systems. I mean, there's a litany of, the litany of things that we can do. I mean, move a well, I mean, we, I've done a discharge system on a quarter acre lot in Lake Arrowhead. I mean, so there's, the, the technology is there, the engineering is there. You know, and regarding the newer systems and the failing systems is that, you know, I think the Health Department would challenge the fact that, that they would much rather have one community drain field that is mandatory to be operated by a utility, as opposed to having 32 individual lots that are alternative, that have a no enforcement mechanism for an alternative drain field that the homeowner may choose to. So they may choose to fix it, they may choose not to fix it, they may not do anything on an alternative drain field. So we have 32 individual non-enforcement, or we have one that is regulated by the SEC. Um, you know, I think the Health Department would tell you all day long, especially if you talk to the ones in Richmond, the Engineering Division, they would tell you all day long that that would be their, their preference. They would rather have one system that they have absolute control over, as opposed to 32 individual homeowners that may or may not choose to enforce their alternative designs that, that we propose. So, you know, I would just tell you that I will gladly make myself available. I know, Meg, I think we had talked one time, very, very briefly. If anybody would love to come and ask me, I can bore you with engineering details, and you make your eyes roll out of your head, but, but I'm just, the, the technology is there. I think that there's a, I, I think you, just if you look at the flip side, that you have the individual alternative systems that you're going to force everybody to do, that may not get the desired result that you want at the end of the day. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to, be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others that would like to address the board?
Paul Waldowski, 8 Picket Lane, in the gerrymandered Rock Hill District. Number one, there was a comment that it's a bad idea, which is incorrect. This is a terrible idea. You need to centralize this, and immediately when I heard you say this, you're going after cluster subdivisions, because you try to hit them any way you can. And if you don't know about stormwater management in the Chesapeake Bay watershed, you should wake up, it's the 21st century. And as far as county to take over public water and sewer, I'm still waiting, 30 years. So if you're going to keep on doing this stuff for other people, I'm tired of this subsidized junk for individuals. It's the we world, not the me world. I'm an engineer, retired one, and I hate hard coding of 32 individual entities, because eventually something's going to happen. You need flexibility, and like the engineer before me who said, you need it regulated by the SEC, because if you let an individual do something, they're going to move. If they have water problems, they don't care about setbacks, they just go and move water. And then people got to go fight them in court because of what they do, because, because they don't take into effect, because all they care about is their property. And water is one of the biggest health problems in this county, as you know, my dirty bathtub. And this new technology is so good that I'd even let my shih-tzus drink the water, but I wouldn't let them drink any of that other county water in, in this county. I wouldn't let them drink any of that other county water in, in this county. I appreciate the comments of estates that were thirty years ago, but that was the twentieth century. And we need to address those things that were not done in the twentieth century correctly. It's kind of like remodeling. You take out something when you're remodeling, you don't put back a twentieth-century solution, you put in a twenty-first. And my best example I can give you is if you're still using a water heater that's eighty gallons, and you're not using a tankless one, then shame on you, because you're just coming home and you're washing yourself with dirty Stafford County water.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay, we have some more questions for Mr. Towery and Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, I do, Madam Chairman, thank you. Mr. Harvey, I've heard a lot of reference here in the last few minutes concerning private utility companies. Maybe Mr. Towery can answer this as well. Do we have any operating in Stafford? And are any of the community drain fields that are already, that are being installed, or they're going to be under a private utility company? Do we know?
I do know that there are, for instance, you referred to, are there any that are operating independently? Not that I'm directly aware of. I do know that there, at the, the existing systems that are out there, the four or five, for instance, the one that was brought up, Canterbury, has, has been brought up. My understanding is that that, that drain field's actually in a state of fail, disrepair and failure at this time, and that the, the HOA group that is in charge of that is looking for some options on how to possibly make those repairs. And I'm not sure that they've figured that out yet. Last talking with the Health Department, they were having some issues. But we don't, I don't have any direct, there are a number of independent entities out there that do, do this type of work that's been referenced to, but I'm not aware directly of any that are operating in Stafford. And the Health Department would be working directly with them. For instance, if Canterbury does have a licensed operator of some sort, they would be responsible to report to, to the Health Department on a regular basis.
Well, based on, on the write-up that we have in our background report, they do not. It says the HOA has been working to make repairs. It doesn't say anything about a private utility company. But anyway, you've answered my question. Thank you.
Ms. Mauer.
Okay, so we've, we've heard some reference to, you know, if there's a failing system, that there's all this magic stuff, that, that they can come out and they can put it on a quarter acre lot and everything is good. We've, we've gone out, actually Stafford County, for all of our Pump and Hall customers, gone out to these failing septic systems that have been on Pump and Hall for a long period of time. We paid for soil scientists to go out there. How many are able to be fixed and brought off of Pump and Hall? How, first off, how many do we have, and how many are able to be fixed?
Well, we, we studied twenty. I believe there's, there's more than that on the Pump and Hall system. Out of the twenty, initially, we thought there might be five. Out of those five, we had one that was successful at finding a site and making the repair.
So, when a, when a septic system fails, they are, in our experience, because we actually physically pay to get soil scientists out there to try to find a solution for these homeowners, and out of twenty, we got one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for staff? All right. Thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board, close the public hearing at this point in time. So, we have our subdivision ordinance and the utilities code. So, we have proposed ordinance oh-eighteen dash seventeen. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to defer, and I'd like to explain why.
Okay.
You need a second first.
Is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Back in twenty-twelve, the Virginia Department of Health assembled a large group of engineers, soil scientists, regulators, people like us, and looked at the problem that Virginia had. And the problem that they had is what we're describing right now, that we have older systems that are failing. And what the counties, all the counties do, we have the heart for this, we're not going to let our citizens, you know, fail. So, many counties stepped in and tried to resolve the problems. The reason why the Virginia Department of Health assembled this group of people is because they knew they needed to make substantive changes, frankly, to our ordinances. And as a result of that, is kind of what I think Mr. Hatch was talking about, then the new ordinances require for mass drain fields, actually any alternate onsite system, not even a mass one, is required to be not just maintained, inspected, and managed completely by a second entity, not an HOA. They're recommending that because they know that with the current technology, then we can manage our nitrogen better. If you guys are keeping up with what's happening with the EPA, you're realizing that we are not, we're failing in our regular systems to manage our nitrogen. And the advantage of the newer systems is they definitely manage it better. And so, some of the things that were in that same report, I wanted to read to you because I thought it was pretty interesting. And so, and I'm specifically taking this out of the Virginia Register of Regulations. If anybody wants a copy of it, I'll send it to you. But it says mass systems are subject to groundwater standards, which require so much nitrogen, nitrate, you guys know what that is, the concentration, as well as the water mounding requirements. The compliance cost to, for these systems may make some development projects no longer feasible. It was understood that the economic impact on the profitability of real estate development but gave property owners an alternative. So, they knew it might be more cost, more costly to put these systems in, but at least it gave those homeowners, like we're talking about, that are, have failing systems, an alternative, that would mitigate some of that risk. And so, the owners of land where development is no longer feasible, they also state, are likely to experience a decline in land values. What this did, or what the Commonwealth of Virginia did by stepping in, is give those owners of land an opportunity to make a different decision. And so, because of that, I highly, well, one more statement, is that unfortunately, it was shared to me a little bit later today, that I received a document that I'd referred to when I talked to staff, I've talked to the Planning Commission, I've shared with them the research that I had found on this to try to understand. But today, I finally got the document, and it's too late to share it with my board members. So, I shared it with our legal attorney, Rashida, and, and just, I mean, we're talking like right before the meeting, to ask her what her opinion was of this. And this was a document, and a ruling that was given by the Attorney General in twenty-twelve stating that counties cannot further restrict that. I understand that there might have been changes after that, and I'd like to refer to our county attorney, if she found any documentation that Cuccinelli changed his mind after he made that ruling.
Supervisor Shelton, because of the late nature of this information, we haven't had time to research it, so we can bring additional information back to the board at a future meeting and to provide the update that you're seeking.
And that's the reason I asked for the deferment, just because I got late information that none of us have been, have seen.
Okay, Ms. Mauer, and then Mr. Snellings.
All right, well, and I appreciate the, the research that Ms. Shelton does, but most of her reference is to failing systems, and that's what we're trying to prevent here, is failing systems. And we have six different systems referenced here in the, in our background package that are here in Stafford County. Three of them are failing. One of them is, is, does not appear to be having regular maintenance or inspection performed, and so the existing mass drain field status is unknown. Only one, which is Living Hope Church, appears to be having regular maintenance, and the last one hasn't even been built yet, but there are soils concerns by the Health Department. And so, I mean, right now, we are kind of sitting on, and I am fearful of, a potential ticking time bomb. I mean, we've tried it, it's not working, and, and to put our homeowners at risk because of new amazing technology that I keep hearing about, but that new amazing technology isn't helping my current homeowners that are on Pump and Hall. And, and you're talking about the most important investment that they're going to make in their entire lives, and that is the investment in their homes. And this board is not, we're, we're not setting policy for debt today, we are setting policy for twenty years from now. And to set up a potential catastrophe for those homeowners twenty years from now, when we already have evidence that the decision that was made before, it's not working. And so, if we want to look at new alternative systems, or we want to look at public utilities, or we want to look at some massive change to our ordinance, let's bring this back. But we need to stop the bleeding now. And, and, and so I am going to support the changes to the ordinances at stance.
Mr. Cavalier?
The question for staff, Mr. Towery. These three systems that are failing, Canterbury Musselman Mobile Home Park and Calvin Court Mobile Home Park, where are the ages of those systems?
I don't know exactly. I'd venture a guess north of thirty years.
They're all fairly old systems. Okay, and it would have been good to have that piece of data here, to tell you the truth, because may, maybe this is a function of age, and maybe it is a function of technology. And to me, without, I, I haven't heard a compelling reason why we should just throw out this option altogether. I think that if, as Mr. Farugi stated, there are advances in this kind of technology that will allow the new systems to work much better and be much cleaner than what we have had, especially those thirty years ago, obviously, then why do we want to throw that out as an option? I, I mean, that's what we're doing here, is throwing out any future use of a reasonable option that may be, in essence, better than what we have on these current drain fields, individuals, as well as the alternative drain fields that we have. And we have a lot of failing ones, and yeah, they can go to the Pump and Hall program, but that's our call, too. So, you know, I'm not buying all this, that this is something we need to just totally disregard any future consideration for something like this. I think we're, we're quick to react on, on changes nowadays, and it's very troubling to me in, in many things that we've done here recently. And I, I think this is short-sighted. I think we need to, you know, one, just at least defer it and see what this research comes out to be, and then, two, I haven't heard a compelling reason to throw out this option.
Mr. Snellings.
I think we're overlooking one thing. I'm sure this, I don't know anything about this technology, I'm not an engineer, don't pretend to be. The thing we're overlooking is, is that developers are using this to develop property they could not develop. They're using this to develop property that was otherwise undevelopable because it wouldn't perk, or it wasn't, the soil wasn't proper. So, it's a way around that. That's a real concern of mine. And we got to look thirty to forty years ahead, is what we've got to do. What's going to happen thirty or forty years from now? We don't, we already know that we don't have any private utility companies in Stafford County operating, so who's taking care of all these community drain fields that have popped up, three of them in my district alone in the last year? I mean, who's taking care of them? There are no private utility companies. So, I'm going to support the, the main motion to put a stop to it. And if we have to come back at a later time, if we can, by law, set regulations in place that would require them to have a utility company, if we can do that, and maybe do a couple of other things, then I may be all in favor of it. But as of today, I agree with Ms. Mauer. We need to stop the bleeding, we need to stop it now. Thank you.
Ms. Mauer.
So, on all this new technology, I'm going to say yet again, we have twenty failed septic systems where we've tried new technology and it didn't work for nineteen of them. We have twenty case studies where nineteen people are up a creek. And these are nineteen homeowners who have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in their homes, and the new technology is not helping them today. A lot of them are in my district. It is unfortunate, and now we're sunsetting the Pump and Hall program. So, so we are telling them that ten years from now, hopefully, technology will change again, but we are sunsetting the Pump and Hall, Pump and Hall program. So, so this is a serious risk that we're taking, and the technology is not helping them. So, so nineteen case studies, right here, right now, and it's not helping.
So, so on that note, Ms. Mauer, because I don't see that data in here.
These are individual systems.
Right, right, and I understand what Mr. Towery was saying, but, you know, without that kind of information, how do, how do I know, as a board member, what kind of other technologies, besides just your word, which, you know, I believe, how do we know what other technologies, as your colleagues up here, were tried on those properties? Is that data in here in our board document?
So, the, the specific technologies that we were looking at were alternative systems. There, there is, in some cases, the possibility to look at some surface discharge systems, and I think Mr. Farugi was talking about that a little bit earlier. The, the issue, when you get into surface discharge systems, and the reason that we, we did not open, if you will, that can of worms, is because it requires a lot of off-site easements and so forth to be able to discharge, usually onto adjacent properties or down roadside ditches, things of that nature. And at the time, there was, so there, there may be some other possibilities, but it's, it's, it's hard to say, frankly.
Okay. All right. Ms. Shelton.
We're talking, the particular ordinances in front of this is about mass drain fields for sharing greater than three lots. And so, I don't know why we're focusing on, on, I get the fact that all AOSs', which is mass drain fields, are one of them. I know why we're talking about that, but the ordinance that we're talking about and the, what the references that I made to the Virginia Register of Regulations, as well as the ruling that was made by the Attorney General on this, specifically addressed mass drain fields, specifically addressed ones that are community drain fields that have the new regulations. And the regulation is currently that anything greater than fifty lots requires this oversight, requires the constant inspections and maintenance by someone other than the homeowner or the person that owns that. And so, I think we might be confusing the two, because the, one, what I personally really liked about what the Virginia Department of Health did is they stepped in and said, you know, in these places, we're going to control that, and so, we're going to put in these measures in place because counties haven't. And I support that from that reason, that whether we did or did not apply different types of technologies in the past for failed systems, and we already know every drain failed, every sewer system fails at some time. We know that, regardless of whether it's a new one or an old one.
If I could just clarify on one thing, too, because there has been some reference to the consideration perhaps of Pump and Hall in a, in a mass drain field situation, which in most cases, I would say, is, is probably unfeasible. You know, for most of these systems, if they have ten to fifteen homes on them, to be able to successfully pump and haul, you know, a property like that would be, I, I don't, I don't know how you would do it without pumping on a, on a daily or every other day basis, and, and the cost would be significant. Going back to Canterbury, because we've talked about that one a little bit, I believe that one's about five miles outside of the urban service area. In a situation like that, if there were a failure and they weren't able to address the issue through some sort of onsite alternative system, be it that they couldn't find the easements, they couldn't find the land, the land didn't, the soils didn't work correctly, or the technology just wasn't there to handle the, the, the system, we'd be talking probably about a four- to five-million-dollar extension, just to get sewer out to those folks, or perhaps the possibility that the, that the property could be potentially condemned. So... So I just wanted to provide that bit of clarification because there is a little bit of question as to whether or not it could actually be pumped and hauled.
Okay. I see somebody in the bullpen, Mr. Smith.
I also just wanted to provide a little clarification. Some of these older systems that we're talking about, they were all your normal drain fields, which had a much larger dispersal area. Many of the community drain fields that are being considered now are the alternative systems, as you mentioned. A lot of the older drain fields, they can't handle as much of the flow anymore because the flow wasn't as good. So if they put an alternative system in, that dispersal system can then handle it. If you start with an alternative system and then it fails, you don't have anywhere to go. And that's one of the concerns as well.
Okay. Mr. Snellings, did you have something else? Oh, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I just, I guess I'd like to get some clarification because when you were saying we have no public utilities that you know of, I'm hearing rumblings behind you of people saying, yes, 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 yes. Private utility, thank you. So I guess one big question is, is can we, whether it be with this or in the future, can we require any of them that they have to have the private utility with that, A? And then, B, when these people come in because the systems have failed, can we then do that to them? Because now they're trying to change into something else. And as you get up and think, I mean, I'm really not in favor of the idea of HOAs having this because of our, the wonderful tradition of HOAs. But I'm just curious about that aspect of it because to a certain degree, that might solve a large problem is if there's some entity that has heftiness. But then I'm also curious if these private utilities have failed in other communities and we just haven't heard about them yet.
Sure. So to clarify, there are companies out there that do provide this type of service, the regular inspection oversight, regular monitoring of the facilities. I am not aware of, in Stafford County in particular, to the six systems that we've talked about, I am not aware of if there is a group monitoring those systems or who those groups are. I can say to the one that Mr. Snellings referenced earlier, that was in his district that was failing, our staff actually found that failing and reported it to the Health Department. So in that specific case, I honestly don't know who has been monitoring it. My, again, my understanding is that there is a requirement for these systems to be monitored on some sort of periodic basis. And if correctly designed and maintained, there's a lot, there are systems out there that work. Ms. Mauer referenced the Lutheran church, I believe, that's actually just down the street. And so the biggest, to your question, I guess, can it be done? I think that that's a question that the board wants to consider as to whether or not the county wants to be involved in monitoring that and enforcing that. We did talk with Loudoun County extensively. They received a lot of challenges over the years. They've set up a pretty comprehensive monitoring program with significant staff, and they've had a lot of legal challenges over the years in their ability to set up and then enforce fines. We've looked at that, I think they have between five to 10 folks that they keep on staff who regularly monitor all of the systems in the county for compliance and enforce fines and things of that nature. So it can be done, but it would take some significant effort. Does that answer?
Thank you. That does. And then I guess this is just a process question for Mr. Harvey. How much outreach was there to explore those different avenues of different, you know, private utilities? What can be done? What are the communities, et cetera? Did we do in this whole process through the various utility commission, the planning commission meetings and all?
Supervisor Cohen, Madam Chairman, I'm not aware of any specific outreach that was done in concert with these public hearings other than the standard notice in the newspaper. We did not speak to private utility companies. As Mr. Towery was explaining, there was some background research that was done prior to these ordinances coming to the board for initial referral and looking at what other jurisdictions have done in various parts of the state with regard to community drain fields. I think you looked at Loudoun County and Falkir County in particular?
Madam Chair. The reason why I ask is because when I was on planning, we were looking at doing that landscape and design thing, and we were doing that. I mean, we made a point of saying, reach out to stakeholders and find out what they're thinking and how this will impact them and et cetera. So I just was curious if we just did that as a program, as a methodology, or if that was just sort of abnormal because I was there. You don't have to answer that one. But it just seemed like that's what we did, was you reached out to numerous sources. So I just was curious. Thank you.
Mr. Harvey, before I go to Mr. Snellings, did the, do we believe that the Planning Commission and the Utilities Commission really had all the adequate information that they really needed in background information to make their votes?
Madam Chairman, I believe the Planning Commission, I can't speak for the Utilities Commission because I wasn't at that meeting. I think they were more focused specifically on the information that was presented at this public hearing tonight. It was in the staff report. As you could see from the background materials and the attachments, we included the Plan Commission Report and the Utilities Commission Report. So they had more of, I guess, a narrow band than we've focused and we've had in some of the discussion tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Snellings?
I think Ms. Shelton is exactly right. I think if there's 50 homes or more, then the state does have some type of regulation.
Yeah.
But here's the deal. I've got a subdivision, cluster subdivision going into my district right now that will be on community drain fields that will not have state regulation. It's 98 homes, and it was filed in two different Platts. 49 here and 49 there. Does not apply. I've got another one going in with 30 homes. Does not apply. And the list goes on and on and on. These are not huge subdivisions. And there are ways around this, and the developers know those ways. You want to put in 98 homes? Fine. You want to get around this ordinance or this law, state requirement? Divide it up. And that's exactly what they've done. So folks, they can get around anything. So that's another reason, and you're right, Ms. Shelton, I remember it when it came up in the TRC because I went. And I even went to Mr. Harvey, and he says, there's nothing you can do about it. They have the right to do that. And that's exactly what they did. Thank you.
Okay. Last, perhaps last comment. Ms. Shelton?
Mr. Harvey, is there anything that precludes the county from requiring all community drain fields, regardless of whether it's less than 50, to meet the same standard that the VDH has for over 50?
Supervisor Shelton, Madam Chairman, I'm not aware of a specific enabling legislation that allows us to regulate the standards for design of a community drain field.
No, what I meant was, could we not, as a county, require all community drain fields, regardless of how many there are, to meet the same standards? In other words, it has to be inspected by a licensed professional, whatever they are. I don't know what they are. But they're licensed professionals. And then they have to have a private utility be able to take care of them. Can't we do that for any of these, regardless of that?
Supervisor Shelton, I'm sorry, I'm going to interject. That question is of a legal nature, and staff hasn't had a chance to look into that. So I don't want to put Mr. Harvey on the spot and opine on something we haven't had a chance to look into.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. But drain fields are regulated by the Health Department, which is a state agency and not the county, correct?
Supervisor Mauer, that is correct, yes.
Okay. So we can't add extra requirements on to what the state does?
Not that I'm aware of.
We would have to get legislation approved.
It's a very complicated subject. So I would ask to let staff bring back additional information because it's not as simple as what we can and can't do. There are things that we can do, but we have to get into the specifics to realize where we're preemptive from acting. And we don't have that information in front of us tonight.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have a motion on the floor and a second to defer, yeah, the substitute motion, to defer this item. Any further comments? Okay. Motion to defer. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Okay. It's a tie. So it fails. So now we'll go back to the original motion, and I can't remember who made the motion. You did. Okay? So now we have Proposed Ordinance 018-17. Any further questions? Okay. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. It's a tie. Okay. So that motion fails?
That's correct, in accordance with the board's bylaws. It will come back at the next meeting.
And Mr. Dudenheffer will be here for that. Okay.
Madam Chair, can we do, we want to give staff any direction as to any information we want in the three weeks' time period? Or is that not allowed?
How would that be?
When this comes back to the board, it has to be presented anew so you will get all the same information again. And staff can look at the video from tonight and be prepared to answer those things. One thing I will note, because it is a public hearing, we'll have to check the advertising requirements of it because of the fact that we may need to advertise it again to meet the requirements of the state code and the board's bylaws.
But if we close the public hearing and we're just moving it on to the next board meeting?
The problem is, is that it says it has to be heard anew, as if it's never been heard before. And so we need to understand how that operates. So I need time to look into it to see if it's beyond a bylaws provision and see whether or not it's a state code requirement as well. But staff can bring you back all the information that was asked of today.
Okay. And if you have any additional comments or anything else that you would like to add, you can contact staff. Yes. Do we need to add, vote on the second ordinance?
I apologize. The board can take a vote on that ordinance if it chooses.
I'm just going to make a motion, we defer it to the next meeting.
Okay. So we have a motion to defer. Any questions? Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries with one absent. Okay. Moving on to item 21. Okay. Item 21. Before this third public hearing, I would like to make the audience in the chambers and those at home watching on television aware that the next public hearing will deal with material that may be disturbing to some members of the community. At times, it is necessary for the board to consider these types of issues to ensure the county's regulations are up to date and citizens and visitors are protected. If you are sensitive to discussions regarding sexually related crimes, you may want to exit the chambers or turn off your live stream of the meeting until the board concludes this item and moves on to the next public hearing. And with that, I'll bring our Commonwealth attorney, Mr. Olson, up to the podium. This is Commonwealth attorney, Consider Adopting a Local Ordinance to Increase the Prohibition of Prostitution, Proposed Ordinance 018-40. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for having me here this evening. Some time ago, the Sheriff's Office approached me. We have a growing prostitution problem in Stafford County. It's a quality of life issue. In speaking to the Sheriff's Office, they indicated they don't have all the tools that they need to combat the problem. One tool that they would like to have would be a local ordinance. And so I did some research, contacted my brothers and sisters in other jurisdictions, found that other jurisdictions have passed local prostitution ordinances, and they have been effective in combating the problem that has arisen in those jurisdictions. Granted, that's some of the larger jurisdictions, but I think Stafford is making that transition, and this ordinance would be necessary. It would give the Sheriff's Office the tools that they need to combat the growing prostitution problem. It would be a local ordinance, not making the punishment any greater than under state law. It'd be a Class 1 misdemeanor to both solicit prostitution and to offer prostitution services. So I would ask the board to look favorably upon the ordinance, pass the ordinance, and give the Sheriff's Office the tools that they need to combat this problem.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Olson? Mr. Snellings?
Well presented.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing. The same rules apply. You have three minutes to address the board. Is anybody in the board chambers willing, interested in addressing this item? Please come forward. Okay. Seeing no one, with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Okay. I have a motion to approve Proposed Ordinance 018-40. And a second, any questions? All right. Thank you. With that, please cast your vote. Tally the vote. That passes with five to absent. Okay. Did you want to vote? Okay. Thank you. I didn't want to say you were absent, but you kind of were. Okay. So that motion, could you please recast your vote? Thank you. Motion passes six with one absent. Thank you very much. Really appreciate you bringing that to the board. Okay. Item number 22. Tonight's fourth public hearing considers code amendments for parking and drive aisle standards. Mr. Harvey, again. This is item 22, Planning and Zoning, Consider Code Amendments. Never mind. Go ahead. Proposed Ordinance 018-02.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This would amend the zoning ordinance to change standards for parking and loading spaces within our county code. This issue has a longstanding effort. The board in April of last year asked the Plan Commission to take a comprehensive review of our parking and loading space standards after receiving some input from the development community that they felt that some of our standards were out of alignment with other jurisdictions. And Ms. Baumke and Mr. Snellings were on a committee that worked with the development community to help identify some concerns with our development processes. And this is one of those concerns that came about. The Planning Commission established a committee after it was referred to them and met a number of occasions and solicited input from professionals in the development community. And it's resulted in the proposed ordinance before you tonight. In general terms, the ordinance would revisit some of our parking requirements and also expand the listing of number of uses in the table of required parking spaces. So it makes it clear for the person looking at our parking standards as to what applies where. Also, too, we found out in doing the research that our number of parking space, or number of loading spaces was excessively high compared to any of our nearby jurisdictions. So we've greatly reduced the number of spaces. In most cases, there's one or maybe two spaces that are required for a particular type of business. Also, too, we went with the smaller minimum size of 12 by 25, which is essentially the size that can accommodate a box truck. And that's the minimum requirement. So a property owner can choose to have more loading spaces in the minimum, as well as have bigger loading spaces if they want to. So that gives the developer and/or property owner a lot more flexibility in how they service their project. With regard to other changes, there were adjustments to the parking space size. As we moved through the process, it was brought up that our current minimum parking space size of eight and a half by 18 is a little small for the modern-day SUV, which we've seen a lot of those. seen a lot of those, and small pickup trucks are very popular these days. So the recommendation is to increase the parking space size to nine by 20. That was a standard the county had back in the 1990s, and we shrunk it because cars were getting smaller. Now we're making it bigger because vehicles are getting larger and more fuel-efficient. Also, there were some concerns in the review about the requirements for compact spaces. Our ordinance currently states that if someone's exceeding the minimum parking space requirements, they can provide the remaining spaces that exceed that requirement as compact spaces. And the compact spaces would be smaller in size, maybe eight feet wide and, I believe, 15 feet deep. There's a lot of concerns about that because in practical terms, people tend to park big vehicles in compact spaces, and it's created some onsite concerns for specific businesses and other activities throughout the county. In review of the application, or excuse me, amendment, as we were going through the process, we were also going through our review by the Department of Environmental Quality for our Chesapeake Bay Act compliance, and they had recommended that we take steps to minimize impervious surfaces with development. So staff would note that reducing the number and size requirements for loading spaces helps reduce impervious area, but increasing the parking space size would marginally increase the impervious area. So we have, on one hand, making less pavement, on the other hand, making more pavement. The DEQ doesn't require us to adopt any specific measures, but staff would note that the parking space size increase is contrary to what they had recommended. The planning commission in its deliberations had recommended approval of the proposed changes, and then staff does as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Harvey? Okay, Mr. Cohen?
Thank you. For the, with element. And just for everybody's knowledge, the, this committee worked very well with the landscaping committee to sort of keep it so that everything was in sync with each other, so that the whole idea was to make the parking spaces in the parking area fit with landscaping and design standards as well. And so the staff did an excellent job, sort of merging two different committees at the same time, and thank you for making wider parking spaces.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harvey. With that, we're gonna open the public hearing. If there's anybody in the board chambers that would like to address the board, please come forward. You have three minutes, as you know.
Thank you. My name is Everett Lovell. I reside at 3071 Jefferson Davis Highway, and I own the Quia Pines Camp Resort. I have two concerns with this. One is that RV parks are listed here, excuse me, RV parks are listed here. In reading the background material, I see numerous references for, this is supposed to be addressing zoning ordinances regarding residential and commercial parking. And as I hope you all know, RV parks are not allowed in residential and commercial parking or land, so I'm wondering why RV parks are listed as part of this document. That's one concern. The other concern I have is it says you're allowed to have one parking spot per RV pad or RV spot. Fortunately, it doesn't say what the maximum parking spot is, and I did hear in the planning commission, they were thinking about addressing what a maximum parking spot would be. Frequently, I'll have four registered vehicles, three or four registered vehicles in one parking spot. For instance, a 40-foot motorhome towing a 25-foot enclosed trailer that probably has a car and a motorcycle in it. So if you're not ever gonna address a maximum parking size, I don't have a huge problem with this. The moment you want to address a maximum parking site, I have a huge problem with this because it'll affect our business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good thing I wasn't here for that other one. Paul Wodowski, Eight Picket Lane. I want the community to know that tonight there was a 3-3 vote, which means that it fails. There was two of them. So be aware, it failed. Both the deferment failed and the other motion failed. Just an observation, I don't know how you can defer something that failed. Now, I'm gonna go buy a smart car because, you know, then I can go into your new parking spaces because you know I'm anti-development, and I'm really, I don't really care if landscaping and pavement work together because we have so much stormwater problems in this county. And if you widen anything in here, it was funny for me to walk into the planning commission, and some of the planning commissioners didn't even read that aspect, so they had to defer it. And I do support the owner of the RV park there. I love when you don't follow the law, you know, residential and commercial, you know? We have recreational-type stuff. So let's cover all our bases, and the public, turn your TVs and look at the 3-3 vote of the motion to try to approve. It failed.
Okay, would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring the adoption of Proposed Ordinance Do I have a motion?
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, with that, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes six with one absent. We are moving on to our last public hearing.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
For reasons previously stated in the record, I will be recusing myself from this particular public hearing.
Okay, thank you. So this is item number 23, planning and zoning, authorize a conditional use permit to allow a car wash within the highway corridor overlay zoning district on an approximately 1.53-acre portion of tax map parcel number 20-12. This is Proposed Ordinance R18-85 in the Garrisonville District. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. If I can have the computer, please. Thank you. The, as the chairman said, this is a request for a conditional use permit for a car wash in our highway corridor overlay zoning category. The property is also zone B2 urban commercial. The property would comprise a 1.53-acre, a portion of a roughly 25-acre piece of property. The applicant is Don Hart, and he's represented tonight by Sherman Patrick, and this property, as stated, is in the Garrisonville District. This is a location and zoning map of the property. You can see the subject portion of the property where the conditional use permit would apply is highlighted in the red outline. The purple outline on the map shows the limits of the highway corridor overlay zone. As you can also see from the zoning map, the red color indicates commercial zone property. We have North Stafford High School immediately to the west, which is on agricultural zone property. The Park Ridge Community, which is Zone PD1, Plan Development 1, immediately to the east. Undeveloped farmland to the north, Zone A1 Agricultural, and also another residential neighborhood further to the northwest. This is a aerial photo image of the property, which shows the, again, location of where the site would be. The property also is encumbered by a resource protection area, and I will speak to that in a little bit as we talk about the development plan for the property. The comprehensive plan suggests this area be suburban with a commercial corridor, so the proposed use is compatible with a commercial corridor designation on the comprehensive plan, as well as a suburban designation. The suburban designation says that if you're going to have commercial development in these areas, that they be one to two stories in height, generally speaking, and that they serve the nearby surrounding community, and staff believes that this proposed use wouldn't meet those criteria. Little bit of zoning history for the property. The property was agriculturally zoned up until 2012. At that point in time, it was rezoned. At that juncture, the then-property owner was considering an indoor sports complex on the property with a number of retail shops in the front area closer to Garrisonville Road. In 2017, the property had changed hands, and the new owner was in process of reconfiguring how the property could be developed under its commercial zoning. And this is the generalized development plan from that 2017 rezoning. As you can see, there are still some pad sites, so to speak, along the Garrisonville frontage. This is Garrisonville Road in this area here. There'd be a main access road going towards the back of the property. This layout shows two multi-tenant buildings along the road frontage and a restaurant behind them. There is a car wash as shown on the generalized development plan in this location here. The other proposed buildings are possibly office space and a retail space, and also a storage facility at the far southern end of the property.
Ms. Mauer?
Quick question. The road that leads off of 610 into North Stafford High School, is that a VDOT road? Is it school property? Who does that road belong to?
Ms. Mauer, this is Wolverine Way in this location here.
Yes.
I've recently been told by Public Works staff that that is actually a VDOT maintained roadway.
Okay.
A number of our schools, the entrance roads are built to state standards and are maintained by VDOT.
Okay, so I have a question. On the interparcial connection, I know that we've talked at great length on the interparcial connection, and we want to be polite to our schools. I get that, but can they prevent that, or is that a VDOT decision?
Supervisor Mauer, in this case, there is intervening property between the applicant's site and the schools, and Wolverine Way. There's a portion of the school's property which is interceding.
Okay, so that is the issue.
Yes, and you're speaking to some of the proffers with the commercial zone property.
Right.
And it contemplates the possibility of connecting to Wolverine Way if the school board gives approval to do so.
Okay.
I'm not aware at this point in time that the school board has given that kind of permission. The proffers do speak to phasing of the development of the commercial property where the connection would be made at a middle phase, so to speak, of the project, if, again, the school board gives the permission to do so.
Okay, and there have just been some questions that people have asked me on that, and I was trying to get at the root of the actual issue, and you have clarified that for me. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. This is the generalized development plan for the specific car wash use that's being proposed. As you can see from this layout, there's a 4,000-square-foot building that's in this location here, and this would be what I call a tunnel car wash, where you drive in one end and the vehicle comes out the other end. There are areas where you can stop and vacuum your vehicle manually. So this is mainly focused on the traffic flow from the highway corridor overlay standpoint. Again, you have the main access road coming into the site, and the overall traffic flow pattern would be in this direction through here and then out, or possibly back this way and then back out. So through the configuration of the site, there would be no negative impacts on traffic flow out to Garrisonville Road, and that was one of the things that staff worked with the applicant on, is to ensure that traffic flow would not impede activity coming in or out of the project area. These are the architectural designs that are being proposed with the application. They are included in reference in the conditions, as well as the actual generalized development plan. This use was contemplated on the original GDP, as I mentioned, and it was included in the background information for the traffic study that was done in 2012 and updated in 2017. So we don't specifically have a new traffic study for this site because it's already been accommodated for, but overall, the improvements along Garrisonville Road with additional turn lanes and the proposed entrance will be sufficient to handle this car wash use. Here's another photograph of what the building would likely look like. This meets a number of our neighborhood design standards in our comprehensive plan in that it has a roof structure that's variable, it's a pitched roof, and it also has a number of other architectural features that make it look more, or less uniform and more like a residential structure. The proposed conditions talk about conformity to the generalized development plan and the architectural rendering. It limits it to a single stall. Car wash, that was a concern the planning commission had. They were concerned about having a do-it-yourself car wash. They, their feeling is that, or some commissioners' feelings, were that those types of operations tend to generate more loitering and things of that nature, whereas these single-tunnel car washes are more operated on a well-supervised basis. There are hours of operations that are limited due to the proximity to school in a nearby neighborhood, from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. There is a requirement for water recycling. Dumpster pads on the site would be screened in similar manner to the primary building, trying to address aesthetics. And signage would also be complimentary with the building materials. And I mentioned earlier about the circulation, there would be an interparcial connection to the pad site in front of this property towards Garrisonville Road. And overall findings, the staff believes this application's consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the commercial development pattern in the nearby area of Garrisonville Road. It incorporates a number of our neighborhood design standards, recommendations from the comprehensive plan, and we believe that the conditions will help minimize impacts to the corridor highway. We don't see any apparent negative aspects at this point in time. The planning commission, in its considerations, recommending approval, as well as staff pursuant to Resolution R18-85.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harvey. Any questions? Mr. Cohen?
Just a couple of quick questions, if I could. One, it's, when you say it's a tunnel, it's, I mean, I go to Santa Fe, where they vacuum my car and all that, so, but you said that this is gonna be a tunnel, and then there's a place for people to vacuum their own cars. So this is pseudo-self-serve, or is it, do you see what I'm getting at? I'm trying to understand. I'll let you cough because I'm coughing.
Apologize.
No, no.
From my understanding, this would be an automatic tunnel, and then at the end, the individual has the option to get out of their vehicle and vacuum it out.
Okay. And then on the various maps, it looks as though almost the entire building's on the RPA.
Oh, yes, thank you. I failed to mention that. The developer for the property had submitted a number of environmental studies that had been reviewed over time. Initially, when staff looked at those environmental studies, that stream was determined not to be a resource protection area, but then after two years' time, it was reevaluated and found out it did meet now the criteria for RPA. The applicant went to the Chesapeake Bay Board to seek relief of some of the RPA standards, specifically for this portion of the stream. They were granted approval by the Chesapeake Bay Board, so there is encouragement into the resource protection area. However, it's being mitigated through onsite repair of the damaged stream channel, as well as some mitigation funds to help establish additional RPA areas in the county.
Okay, Ms. Shelton?
That's interesting, Mr. Harvey. In the consideration of this within an RPA, are we increasing the floodplain to surrounding areas at all by putting that building there?
Supervisor Shelton, this particular property in that stream is not a 100-year floodplain, so we don't, it's not a regulated floodplain at this point in time. When we look at the stormwater management that they'll have to deal with, with the site, they're gonna have to show that they're not creating an erosive situation for the stream channel itself. And partly, that'll also be rectified when they do the mitigation for the RPA by correcting the failing side slopes of the stream. the failing side slopes of the stream. That should help with, again, some concerns about flooding.
All right. No other questions? We'll now open it up to the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I want to, I have some slides that I want to show you, but Mr. Harvey has covered a lot of those items, so I'm going to try to speak to some of the areas that captured your interest. First, I wanted to make the point, however, that this does require a conditional use permit because it is located in the highway corridor overlay district. There are other locations on the site where it could be located that would not require the special use permit, but this location was arrived at in cooperation with the Parkridge Community. In that earlier plan, the original plan that he showed you, the car wash was first proposed a little closer to the community. And so, this location is set back 200 feet from Garrisonville Road, so it's not really a frontage lot, the way that you were trying to regulate through the Hcod. And it's also located 400 feet from the residential community, which is as far as we could get it from the residential community to address any concerns that they might have. Incidentally, it's 160 feet from the high school, just in case you'd be concerned about that as well. One of the things that we wanted to be sure to touch on is that the earlier proffers that were on this site proposed a recreation center, but with the construction of the county recreation center, that project frankly failed. It could not compete, and it was no longer financially feasible. And that was the reason for coming back. The property owner wasn't able to transfer the property because it was no longer feasible. That buyer went away, and Mr. Hart has stepped in and then, and since, tried to restructure the development of the property, also with a commercial, urban commercial zoning. But the net effect of that was a 28% reduction in the amount of traffic that would have been generated from this site. I do have a slide where I can show you side-by-side the two traffic study results that show that there is actually, almost a third of the traffic is reduced by this proposal that was approved in the last proffer amendment. There was a question about Wolverine Way and whether or not it was a VDOT road, or what sort of access there was. You got a lot of the answer, but not the complete answer. Wolverine Way is, in fact, maintained by VDOT, but it is not owned by VDOT. That's unlike other rights of way in the county. It's not like Garrisonville Road, or any of the other public streets that you're familiar with. It is on school property. Let's see. Can I have the slides, please? The second slide specifically. This slide is an aerial, much like the ones that Mr. Harvey had, but it shows you the, a much larger view of the property. And you can see that the high school is located to the left-hand side of the aerial photograph. You see Wolverine Way sort of arching, arching around back out to Garrisonville Road. And you see the car wash site there highlighted in yellow. The car wash site is rather close to Wolverine Way. There is an interparcel connection that will show up better in a later slide. But here, this slide shows you that there are no lot lines around Wolverine Way. If you look at Garrisonville Road and the stormwater management pond that's at the top-left-hand corner of the subject site, you see that there is a property line, and that is demonstrating that right-of-way is in a separate ownership from the parcels, other parcels in the area. Next slide, please. This view, these two slides are essentially the same area, but enlarged. The one to the left is a large view. You can see Parkridge at the very top of the slide. You can see that it's 400 feet to the closest home in Parkridge. That home is actually in the gates of Parkridge. There is a buffer requirement that's fairly stringent along that property line. You also see that there is a hatched area that is the part of the storm, or the RPA mitigation plan for reestablishing the stream that once flowed through there. I'll take just a moment to answer the questions and concerns that you had about the RPA and the Chesapeake Bay approval. With respect to the Chesapeake Bay approval, the first thing that they needed to consider and look at with this property is the quality of the stream. You don't hear that a lot in the things that normally come before you, but the quality of this stream is somewhat hampered, or violated, by, first, in the lower, the picture on the left, the lower right-hand corner, you see a VDOT stormwater management pond. That stormwater management pond is taking stormwater management from Garrisonville Road and holding it, and then releasing it slowly, and we believe that is what caused this stream from going from an intermittent stream in 2012 to a perennial stream in 2017. It's because that pond is capturing the water, and then that water's being released slowly, and one of the measures for an RPA or a perennial stream is that the water flow is more continuous. So, that, in effect, made it more continuous. But it is, it's highway water that is coming onto the property. If you go to the top of the screen where the word "Parkridge" is, you see that that RPA would also include those single-family dwellings that you can just begin to see here, and you could see some of that in the aerial photograph that Mr. Harvey showed you. As you get further beyond those single-family dwellings, that stream turns into a concrete ditch on the north side of the main boulevard going into Parkridge. So, that stream, we have a very short segment here that had some environmental quality, but it was greatly diminished by the stormwater management pond that's to the upstream side, the south end of the property, and by the concrete ditch that takes it to a stormwater management pond that is a regional pond for Parkridge. So, those variables made that stream relatively unimportant from an environmental perspective. Notwithstanding that, the Chesapeake Bay Board did require a stream restoration, which I've already said is in that hatched area that you see on the screen, on our GDP to the left, and they also required a monetary contribution for off-site storm, stream restoration, which was a considerable contribution. Next slide, please. The hours of operation have already been covered. If you could go to the next slide, please. This is a screen that shows a view of the property that shows a little bit better, first, the highway improvements that are being made across the frontage of the site. There's a full dedication to the future widening of Garrisonville Road. There is a substantial widening of the road that's occurring and is highlighted in yellow. The site will have right-in, right-out turning movements that come into the property, and the green lines are just there to show you that there is a collector road, if you will, that will go down the length of that larger commercial property and bring the traffic out to Garrisonville Road. And the shaded area, of course, is the car wash, and we have some arrows there that show how the traffic circulation goes through the car wash.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Mauer has a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, in this photo, in my conversations with Mr. Dudenheffer on this project, he had mentioned a sidewalk across 610, extending all the way across the front of this project. Is that, and I don't know if this question is for you, or if this is a question for Mr. Harvey, is that an Hcod requirement, the sidewalk? And when is this sidewalk being constructed?
I know the last question first, and that is, Mr. Hart has agreed to construct that sidewalk across the VDOT property all the way to the school site, but I don't know if that's an Hcod requirement.
Supervisor Mauer, the zoning ordinance requires that sidewalk be extended along the full frontage of the corridor highway, in this case Garrisonville Road.
Okay. So, in front of the VDOT property, all the way to the school site, is just in, that's not required by Hcod?
Across the VDOT property, that's off-site from the applicant's property, but from what I understand, they've agreed to construct that sidewalk anyway.
Okay.
I know that there was discussion between the school staff and the applicant regarding that, because the school staff was interested in seeing the sidewalk extended all the way through.
Okay. So, if we do defer this item, can we get that included in the resolution? Because I don't see that anywhere in the resolution. I'd like to see that memorialized in writing, if that's an agreement that's been made.
Supervisor Mauer, I'd have to check with council to see if we can require an off-site improvement as far as a CUP condition.
No? Okay. So, this is just a gentleman's agreement, and we hope they do it?
I understand they've given a verbal commitment.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Supervisor Mauer, my client would be glad to admit or agree on the record that that sidewalk will be extended across the VDOT property.
Okay.
Next slide, please. You've seen the architectural renderings. Next slide, please. This slide shows an example of how another facility that's going to be very similar, or that is very similar to this, is set up with respect to the tunnel and the outdoor vacuum units. If you'll recall, you could go into the site and around the building to the far side in this photograph, you come back and you go through what we're calling the tunnel, and come out on the other end. And then, people who choose to can make a U-turn and go back into this area that you see on the screen with the vacuum booms. And the vacuum boom is a rack, and the hose drops down, so you're not dragging the hose on the ground, and you can vacuum the inside of your car if you want. Many customers do not take advantage of that. Many customers, after they get the outside of their car washed, will just proceed off of the property. And so, it is an option, but you do not have employees standing at the beginning or the end of the tunnel, which is rarely, usually where the congestion begins at car washes. This is a way to expedite that process, to move the cars through more quickly, so that there's, there's less interruption. Next slide, please. And this is the comparison of the traffic impacts of the two zoning cases. This is going back to the history of the rezoning and the proffer amendment a little bit, but I did promise at the beginning that I would show you those numbers, so that you can look at them and see specifically that the Patriots Crossing proffer amendment actually reduced the traffic generation that was previously assigned to the Stafford Sports Complex. If you have any questions, or if there's something I haven't addressed, I'd be happy to try to answer those questions for you now. We are hoping for your approval eventually.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Cohen?
Just very quickly, because it got muddled a bit, at least in my head, is there going to be a desire for, or a future connection to Wolverine Way?
That was a question that we discussed quite a bit during the rezoning and proffer amendment. The applicant has proffered that they will provide that connection if the school board requests it and will allow it. So, that is already a proffered condition on the larger rezoning on the 25 acres. And so, to this point in time, it's our understanding that the school board does not wish to have that interparcel connection.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the board on this matter?
Paul Waldoski, Eight Pickin' Lane. Yeah, no, no negative connotation. Well, CUP is favoritism. That's the first aspect of it. And if you believe, which is subjective, that highway water is going in that pond, well, I don't believe, because I'm objective. The comp plan is designed to not have CUPs, and we already have the 610 car wash, and if you drive back there, they'll vacuum your car. You'll go through the tunnel, and it's been here 30 years. So, now, you're going to go down the road a few miles. I don't know exactly how many miles it is, but I think it's less than three. And you have a car wash that's going to be near one of our most precious resources in the county, and that's the high school. Now, there's McDonald's, who the owner graciously gives them water to have car washes, to raise funds, because you all don't give them the funds to do what they need for their extracurricular I just can't believe you're going to approve a sidewalk to nowhere, and there's also a discrepancy. Staff said that they're open 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and he says you're open 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And I challenge each of you to go on 610 at 7:00 a.m., when they're all going to North Stafford High School, because we have long lines at our high schools, because we have a school board that doesn't know how to stop parents from driving, or let alone the high school students, they drive themselves to school. And that's why we have all these extra buses. It just, it just amazes me what comes before this board, and how the planning commission can let this go through, so you don't have to go to Santa Fe anymore. You can go to Patriotic, or whatever it's called. It's red, white, and blue. But I think he's going to put competition on the other guy, but I really hope your business fails terribly, because it's called location, 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 and this is not the location for a business of this type. And giving favoritism to him for a CUP is just not right.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the board like to, board chambers like to address the board? Okay. With that, going to yield to Ms. Mauer on this, since Mr. Dudenheffer is not here. He is absent, and this is in his district.
Madam Chair, before we close the public hearing, I'd like to make a motion to defer this item, leaving the public hearing open, and ask that it be reheard at the 7:00 p.m. session at our next meeting.
Okay. Ms...
Excuse me, Madam Chairman. Before the board takes up that motion, I believe the applicant typically has a chance to respond.
Right. Right. True. Correct. Mr. Patrick, would you like to respond to any comments?
None at this time.
All right. Thank you. Okay. With that, we have a motion.
Yes, I second it.
And you seconded. Okay. To leave the public hearing open, and we will defer this to the 7 o'clock meeting next, the first meeting in November. All right. Cast your vote.
That would be Wednesday, November 7.
November 7. Thank you. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes with two absent, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.